And for the invocation, we have tonight Pastor Dr. Morris Woods from Friendly Church of God in Christ. Good evening, Pastor Woods. How are you?
I am well, Mayor. How are you doing?
Good, thank you. We're all good. We're ready for your invocation.
Amen, with bowed heads. Our Father in Heaven, we thank you for this wonderful, awesome day that you gave to us. We thank you, Father, for the city council, this opportunity to seek your name before the meeting starts. And Lord, we just ask you to lead us and to guide us. We pray for the city of Oceanside. We pray for our mayor and each council member. We pray for our county and our state and the citizens of this beautiful city. We pray for their safety and their welfare. And most of all, we pray that the glory of God be revealed in our efforts of justice and peace. We pray for your guidance and the path to social justice. In Jesus' precious name, we thank you, Lord. Amen and amen.
Amen and amen. Please remain standing and join me for the pledge allegiance. Ready, begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Tonight, we have three presentations and like to start the first one with Congressman Mike Levin and also Deputy District Director Kyle Crahill of Congressman Mike Levin's office. Hi Congressman Mike Levin, how are you? You are muted.
Congressman Levin, do we need you to unmute yourself?
Thank you. It wasn't letting me. Hi Mayor, hi everyone. It's great to be with you. Thanks for having me. I am so glad to have the chance to speak with you all on the American Rescue Plan and how it will help the city of Oceanside get through this pandemic.
Yes, you do have some great news for us, don't you?
I do. I certainly do. And very simply, it's over $33 million directly to the city of Oceanside as part of this American Rescue Plan. And if I may, Mayor, for just a minute, share more about it.
Yes, please.
We're now more than a year into this unprecedented national health and economic crisis, and the effects on the American people have been devastating. We've lost loved ones, jobs, homes, businesses, and much more. Thankfully, earlier this month, President Biden signed the American Rescue Plan into law, which is essentially a comprehensive relief package that will bring critical aid back to our district. The American Rescue Plan represents the bold action that the American people need. There's a lot in this bill that's going to help our neighbors here in Oceanside, as well as Americans across the country. As most of you know, the American Rescue Plan includes $1,400 in direct payments for individuals and families, for everything from helping to make rent, to feed their kids, to pay their bills. Many of those checks have already arrived in bank accounts across the country. It also includes funding to help hungry families and to support organizations like the North County Food Bank. And it expands eligibility for the Paycheck Protection Program, or PPP program, to all 501(c) nonprofits, all sizes and types, with the exception of 501(c)(4) lobbying organizations. And I'm hopeful that our local food banks, our chambers of commerce, our churches, our other nonprofits will be able to receive relief. The PPP is also critical for our small businesses, like the ones in Oceanside that are trying to make it through. And the bill includes, in addition to more funds for PPP, a $28.6 billion restaurant revitalization fund. And that's for restaurants and bars with 20 or fewer locations that have been hit hard by the pandemic. I hope that the funding will help prevent more job losses, which is something that has been very important, obviously, for all of us and something I've particularly been focused on with regard to our veterans. I serve as Chair of the Veterans Affairs Subcommittee that has jurisdiction over veteran employment. And I'm very proud to announce to you that my colleagues and I were able to secure $386 million as part of the American Rescue Plan to help get our veterans back to work with a rapid retraining program. That's above and beyond any of the other GI Bill benefits or anything else that is available. While all this is critically important, the reason why I wanted to specifically come and speak with you is because in all the past COVID relief, smaller cities, now smaller being a relative term, cities under 500,000 people, have been left out of any direct relief from the CARES Act, from the year-end stimulus bill. And we've been advocating for nine months to include smaller cities all throughout our district. And I'm very pleased that that advocacy paid off. In the American Rescue Plan, all cities, regardless of their population, will receive direct funding. And I know that Oceanside has had significant revenue losses from the pandemic. I know that particularly tax revenue from tourism has taken a dramatic hit. And as a result, some cities have been forced to cut services or even furlough or lay off staff or to postpone or cancel new projects that you've had on your books. And I am really honored, as I mentioned at the outset, that Oceanside will receive $33,412,000 to help keep public workers on the job, to help maintain essential services. It can even be used for a variety of infrastructure needs. And I look forward to working with you. If anybody has any questions in the city about how the funds can be used, we have staff in the House of Representatives that can help in our House Oversight Committee that have jurisdiction over the formula. But I think you will find that you will have great latitude, as a city, to use the funds the way you see best. And I'm thrilled about also the money for our schools. I know there's plenty in there for Oceanside Unified and other, I think you've got some Oceanside residents that are actually invested in Unified, from what I've heard from the mayor. Both will receive significant help under the American Rescue Plan. In fact, Oceanside Unified School District will receive an estimated $30,811,000. And that'll help with everything from reducing class sizes to modifying spaces to allow for public health measures and to invest in better ventilation and PPE. I can tell you, I am thrilled. I have two young children in our local public school, and I cannot wait to get them back in person, get everybody back in person as quickly and as safely as we can. Next, we're focused on our Build Back Better initiative. That'll be comprehensive recovery legislation based on infrastructure development. We've already been in touch with the city about your priority projects, both shovel-ready projects and near shovel-ready. And we'll be looking forward to working with you in the weeks and the months ahead on that. But I'm very, very hopeful that the investments we make in the Build Back Better Plan will support infrastructure projects throughout our region, just like the Pure Water Oceanside project. And I can't wait to work with you all on all of that. So with that, Mayor, thanks for having me. Have a wonderful rest of your meeting.
Thank you Congressman Levin. I also wanted to ask you about something that just happened recently, and that is something about bringing back earmarks.
Well, community project funds are coming back. And I am very encouraged by what I've heard. In fact, I've had three meetings just this week with our respective parts of the House Appropriations Committee regarding things like water and other types of projects. And I think they're going to be done in a transparent and accountable way. The mechanism was approved by both the Republicans and the Democrats in the House and Senate. And I'm hopeful that we can put in the best possible projects for our community and hopefully have some great results.
Thank you, and hopefully that'll include our shoreline study. That's what we're really excited about.
We will absolutely try our best. And I've been working with your team, and they've been great on that priority list. And we'll do everything we can to try to get these projects moving forward.
Thank you, and I wanted to also introduce Kyle, who is in your Oceanside office. Kyle, did you want to say a few words? You're muted.
Yes, thank you so much for having the Congressman here. It's an honor. And help is on the way.
Fantastic. Thank you both. Thank you so much. Looking forward to working with you. I wanted to add Vista Unified School District, $46.7 million. So our kids are going to be able to get, you know, the schools are going to be opening up, and our kids will be able to go safely because of these funds. Thank you so very much. Next presentation. Chief Armijo, would you like to come down, please, to a podium? I'd like to present our new chief, Police Chief for the city of Oceanside, born and raised in Oceanside. Okay, born at Camp Pendleton at the Naval Hospital. That's Oceanside.
Same thing.
And going to OHS, we are the best. Oh, I'm sorry. Did I say that out loud? And just having your career here as a police officer, you know, you've gotten to know our neighborhoods, our residents, our diverse community by being here this entire time and choosing to stay in Oceanside for your career. And I just want to congratulate you, first of all, for signing up for this very critical position and for being chosen as the best. So I present to our citizens of Oceanside our new chief, Fred Armijo.
Thank you, Mayor.
Got to stand up for that.
I don't think I've blushed in a long time. Thank you, Mayor. Just a couple of brief comments. You know, having grown up in Oceanside, I never really had a desire to do this work in any other community. And for me, it's important that our community knows that we have some really outstanding people working at all levels of our police department who recognize that we do some things pretty well, but that we will work to do even better. And that there are some things that we haven't done so well and will work even harder to do better in those areas. My immediate areas of focus are really centered around the concepts of training, accountability, and community. But we have a lot of other work to do organizationally within the police department. And the work ahead won't be easy, but it's important. And I'll just finish up with thanking all of the members of the community who truly have supported me throughout my career. It's very much appreciated. And it truly is an honor to have been selected as the next chief, so thank you very much.
Thank you, Chief. Sounds good. Our last presentation is Meals on Wheels. This is Champion Week, pretty much focusing on the good works of Meals on Wheels, a program that's been around for many, many years. I ended up getting on, helping with one of the routes, with Bob Carroll, a 21-year veteran volunteer. He's been doing it for 21 years, delivering hot and cold meals to our residents. And tonight, we have Charlotte Phan and Brent Wakefield. So I see Brent, you're here. Great.
I'm here, and Charlotte's here as well, up in the corner. What an honor to be here with you, Mayor Sanchez and council member. And yes, it is Champions Week for Meals on Wheels across the United States. And we do this, we bring elected officials out to serve meal and their need, but also just to have the message of the importance of nutrition amongst our seniors and that kind of more-than-a-meal connection that we provide. So it's my pleasure, and I was going to show you a quick PowerPoint presentation. But first, let me just give a shout out to Charlotte Phan, who's been with Meals on Wheels for over 23 years now. And she's a North County resident, and she's the one that manages the site up here. Charlotte, it's thank you for joining us this evening as well.
Yeah, I got to meet Charlotte on the route. It was fantastic to... 23 years, so she beat Bob by two years.
Well, you got to meet the best then. So if you don't mind, I'm going to share my screen here. So I just got a little PowerPoint presentation for you all. So here we are, Meals on Wheels. And I think the one thing that I would like to make is that even during the pandemic, we were able to deliver hot meals, warm smiles, six days a week. And we've adopted to what, adapted to what was required of us. So we basically have the same model. We show up, we engage with the client, but we don't cross the threshold. We do all this from a safe distance and with a mask on. But it has been a really critical service in a time of need right now. So you can see, if you look back at the pandemic months here, March, look at that jump from March to April and May. So we saw about a 47% increase in demand for our services, and we've been sustaining that. So we went from, you know, about 1,300, 1,400 clients a day to 1,900 to 2,000 clients a day across the county of San Diego. And so we do have clients in Oceanside, of course, as well. And you see the meal numbers as well. So, you know, each month, we're delivering, you know, somewhere up here around 55,000, 54,000. February, of course, has less days, so that drops. But thanks to what has gone on, you know, we've been able to, with our citizens giving money and foundations stepping up, we've been able to make new kitchen hires, expand the automation of our kitchen, and establish a companionship call program to help combat the isolation during these days. And that continues to be a top concern for all of us right now is really the mental cognitive well-being of our seniors and your citizens that we're serving. And so Charlotte, would you like to say a few things about the numbers and the clients in our area, please?
Yes, I'll be happy to. We currently serve 130 active client in Oceanside. I wanted to thank all the mayor and also the council members because you're all very supportive this week, Champions Week, and Councilmember Jensen and Councilmember Rodriguez will be next Tuesday. And Councilmember Wiseman did it two years ago and actually also invited us to come here to promote our needs. And so two years ago, that we only had four delivery routes in Oceanside. Now we have six volunteer routes, daily and on the weekends, plus two additional staff routes because we took on, right now, out of the 130 clients, we took on maybe 45% of them COVID-funding meals. That means they do not pay for anything. It's a free meals provided for them. And so, and we were not able to have the volunteer capacity is reached to the max. So we had to bring in staff to do those routes. So, which is really not our model because we really want the volunteers, and Mayor and Councilmember Jensen, you experience how the volunteers interact with our clients. They're like their friends. And so we really wanted to build up more volunteer capacity so that we can increase more routes in Oceanside.
Fantastic.
We talked about the, yeah, we talked about the hidden hunger in San Diego. And so, you know, our objective is after the COVID funding goes away, I think hunger, you know, it's kind of pulled back the curtain on some of the hunger issues throughout our county. And so we are going to be working as an organization to try to address those, both with private funding and then do more advocacy with the government for Older Americans Act, which funds nutrition programs, senior nutrition programs as well. So your involvement, both as citizens and as elected officials, is going to be critical to get that message out. And thank you again for showing up and being the warm smile along with the hot meal. We appreciate it, Mayor.
Thank you, Brent. Thank you, Charlotte. And many of them were veterans as well. So, and citizens of Oceanside residents for many years, sometimes several decades. So it was really fun to talk about the early days of Oceanside, at least for me. Thank you very much. And I bet two years ago, when Councilmember Weiss went, he probably serenaded some of the, some of the folks, right, with his guitar?
Man.
Did you take any pictures of that? No. Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you all for the opportunity. Be well. Thank you.
Thank you for what you do for Oceanside.
Sure, it's our pleasure. It's our honor.
Okay, next on the agenda, our closed session is a closed session report from our city attorney. Mr. Mullen?
Thank you. Council met in closed session to discuss labor negotiations, employee evaluations, and pending litigation. With respect to the labor negotiations, council met and gave direction on negotiations with the Oceanside Firefighters Association, Oceanside Fire Management Association, and the Western Council of Engineers. There's no action under the Brown Act to report on item one. Item two, public employee performance evaluations involving city manager and city attorney. There's no action under the Brown Act to report on that item. And item three, conference with legal counsel on litigation. The council met on a workers' compensation matter involving Bradley Hunter, claim number 17130980, and a pending litigation matter, Mueller versus the city of Oceanside and AT&amp;T Incorporated, case number 37201843090. Council met and gave direction on both items 3A1 and 2, but there's no action under the Brown Act to report at this time.
Thank you. Next up are the consent calendar items, items five through 19. There's a motion to approve. Councilmember Weiss?
I'll move approval, but I'd like to poll 17, please.
Okay, item 17 to be polled. And there's a second by Deputy Mayor Keim. Let's vote on these items. Oh, and I understand there are no public requests.
There is no public on consent calendar.
Thank you. Let's vote.
Motion approved, 5-0.
Thank you. Item number 17 is adoption of a resolution to change and confirm the designation of Valley Center Municipal Water District Representative to the San Diego County Water Authority Board of Directors as a proxy to vote in the absence of the city of Oceanside's duly-appointed representative. Councilmember Weiss?
I just have two quick, this is the third time we've had this item on. I think the first one was to designate Rainbow. Then it went to Eleven High, and now Valley Center. So I'm just curious as to, I mean, are we spinning a wheel to see which agency comes up next? What's the reason we're trying to make the change? And how often in the past several years have we had to have a proxy vote on our behalf?
Good evening, nonvolunteer and councilmembers. Yeah, we have not had a proxy, use of the proxy vote in the last eight years that I recall. Typically, it's only if our representative is absent from the meeting, then the proxy is designated ahead of time to vote in their place. The proxy cannot be directed to vote either way. So it's important for us to have someone in that position that is aligned with what we're, what our beliefs are and what our goals are in the region. Each of those agencies that were proposed are aligned on some of the major projects that are coming forward at the Water Authority, the largest being the Regional Conveyance System, which is a $6 billion project, of which Oceanside would be responsible for approximately $300 million. So our position in that project has been to oppose the project as it does not bring new water into the region, as well as it will increase rates for our generation, our children's generation, and then our grandchildren's generation.
Thank you. Thank you, and I did have a chance to meet with some Water Authority representatives. Actually, the CEO, is that the title? What was that? General Manager and Deputy General Manager and also Board Member. And so they did confirm, they had previously confirmed to me that the proxy is a completely independent with respect to the voting, does not have to take, will not, cannot be directed on how to vote. So it's an independent agent that we, that is, stands in for us. Any other questions from the dais? Motion to approve? Is there a motion to approve? I'll move for approval. Second? Okay, motion to approve and a second. Please vote. Thank you very much. And I do understand that we are looking at possibly a workshop.
Motion approved, 4-1. Weiss, no?
Sorry. I understand that we are looking at a workshop sometime this summer to discuss some of the things that are happening with the Water Authority.
Mayor and council, as you shared, we did meet with the General Manager yesterday. They requested to come present to council on the regional conveyance project. And so we will schedule that probably for a council study session sometime this summer.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Next, under general items, we have item number 20, which is acceptance of a report on existing cannabis licenses, conditional use permits, and operating facilities. And we have a report by Stephanie Sarvantis, planner. And we have six speakers on this item.
Good evening, Mayor, councilmembers. My name is Stephanie Sarvantis with the Planning Division, and I will be presenting the cannabis program update tonight. Staff recommends that the city council accept this report and provide direction to staff should council have a desire to modify any terms of the city's cannabis program. A brief background on the program. In 2017, an ad hoc committee was formed to explore possible regulations regarding cannabis businesses within Oceanside. In 2018, city council adopted an ordinance amending the city code and zoning ordinance to allow the establishment and operation of several commercial medical cannabis-related uses, including nurseries, cultivation, manufacturing, distribution, and testing lab. That same year, city council approved a regulatory fee structure and application format, as well as approved amendments to the zoning ordinance, which affected cultivation uses in the ag zones, and adopted an ordinance to allow no more than two non-storefront retail licenses to be issued. In 2019, the city council adopted a resolution capping the number of cultivation licenses to be allowed. Last year, in 2020, council approved the removal of the medical restriction for cultivation facilities only and established a tax on cannabis business activity. The city started accepting local license applications in 2018, and the first local licenses were issued in 2019. A total of 21 licenses were issued that year. In 2020, the city issued an additional four licenses. During the 2020 renewal period, there were a few facilities that either did not request renewal or were unable to meet the requirements for renewal. As of today, the city has four active manufacturing licenses, five active distribution licenses, 12 active cultivation and nursery licenses, and one non-storefront retail license. The city currently only has cap on the cultivation and on the non-storefront. Manufacturing and distribution does not have a cap. After obtaining a local license, facilities must apply for a conditional use permit through the Planning Division. As of today, the city has received 12 conditional use permit applications, four of which have been approved, Med Leave for non-storefront, Left Coast for manufacturing, and Send Leave for cultivation and nursery. There are two more applications scheduled for hearing for next month, and three more facilities are under review. Med Leave, non-storefront, is currently the only cannabis facility that is open and operating since June of 2020. Left Coast Manufacturing has been issued a building permit, and they expect to be open in the next few weeks. And Send Leave Nursery is expected to open soon as well, with cultivation to follow at a later date. To date, staff has implemented several components of the cannabis program, including issuing employee permits for Med Leave, conducting pre-opening inspections as part of the business license issuance. And staff will be coming later tonight with new program fees to implement annual inspections, business audits, and renewals. Staff will also be coming back tonight with a municipal code amendment regarding odor control and local license status. Staff recommends that city council provide direction on adult-use manufacturing and distribution. Allowing adult-use manufacturing and distribution would remove the unnecessary distinction and allow facilities to sell their product to adult-use retailers under the current state regulation. Staff also recommends that the city council provide direction on whether to include adult-use non-storefront. At this time, staff recommends that the At this time, staff recommends that the city council accept this report and provide direction to staff should council have a desire to modify any terms of the city's cannabis program. Thank you, and I am available for questions.
Thank you. We have six speakers.
Correct.
Let's, let's hear from the public.
Our first public comment is from Karen Tomlinson, to be followed by Lexi Goudy, to be followed by Gracie Morgan.
Good evening. Can everybody hear me?
Yes.
Good evening, Mayor Sanchez and city councilmembers. My name is Karen, and I'm a partner of Med Leaf Delivery. My family and I have lived in Oceanside in the tri-city area for over 30 years. I come from very humble beginnings. As a kid, I used to live in the RV park on PCH near Buccaneers Beach. My favorite memories were going food stamp shopping with my mom at the canned goods store. For those that don't know, it used to be where Metro Flex Gym is today. My mom would buy me those mini fruit pies, and we'd walk along the pier. Why do I bring this up? Because I'm very much a part of this community. I lived through its challenges. I've been there for its changes. And just like the city I call home, I've risen up, made good choices, and now strive to continue to see Oceanside shine in a positive light. This evening, Med Leaf asks you to allow us adult-use delivery sales now in order to compete with the large amount of illegal deliveries delivering right now in your city today. We ask you to lean on us to be our community's safe option, where our products are tested and our staff, who deliver to our residents' doors, are background-checked. Lastly, I personally ask you, as the Director of Community Outreach, to look towards the future, where the cannabis businesses in Oceanside make a positive impact by giving back to local nonprofits, and Measure M tax dollars are used to keep our citizens safe and to grow our community programs. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next public comments from Lexi Goudy, to be followed by Gracie Morgan, to be followed by Amber Newman.
Hi, can everyone?
Yes, we can.
Great. All right.
You may want to turn down the meeting on your end so we don't get that feedback.
Yes. Can you hear me now?
That's better. You're ready to go.
Perfect. Awesome. Hi, everyone. My name is Lexi Goudy, and I am the current Assistant Office Manager at Med Leaf Delivery. I am in support for adult use of cannabis in Oceanside. In 2020, when the pandemic hit, I lost my job with Hilton. The hotel I worked in closed completely and left me with no support. Thankfully, three months later, Med Leaf provided me a career in an industry I'm truly passionate about. Without Med Leaf, I know myself and many of my amazing coworkers, we have not been able to get through the pandemic with all the difficulties it brought to us. I am in support for adult use to come to Oceanside. Without it, the daily challenges I face will continue to strengthen the illegal market of cannabis sales in our city. My patients, they constantly question why they need to purchase a rec when other places in Oceanside do not require them. They also voice their dissatisfaction with being taxed while still having to purchase a rec. Continuing to operate with only medical-use licensing in Oceanside will not be beneficial. Please allow adult use into our community so we can replace the bad with good. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Gracie Morgan, to be followed by Amber Newman, to be followed by Teri Ann Skelly. Do we have Gracie?
Good evening, council. Thank you so much for the introduction. My name is Gracie Morgan with Med Leaf Delivery. Over the last eight months, as you have heard, we have been in operation. Our growth here has been slow, yet steady, and most of that is largely due to the fact that being medicinal-only, as you have heard from my colleagues, it does stifle our ability to service the 61% of Oceanside residents who voted on Measure M back in 2018. Being medicinal-only means that we can only deliver to California residents 18 years or older with a medical card. Having adult use would offer us the opportunity to serve all non-California residents. So again, Oceanside's tourism community that's coming to our new beach resorts and those who are 21 and up. Most importantly, we would be able to fairly compete and help diminish the illicit and gray markets that are still in existence today. After many conversations with staff about adult-use licensing for your two type-nine retailers, we have their support. They have absolutely no objections. If council were to change the language in the ordinance to adopt adult use, it would be something that is welcomed and approved and something that we would greatly like to see and know that the city would be able to benefit from, largely, again, in the way that my colleagues have already stated, to help diminish the black market and the gray market that is still largely in existence today. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Our next public comment is from Amber Newman, to be followed by Teri Ann Skelly, to be followed by Erica Leary. Amber, whenever you're ready.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, great. I realize it probably goes without saying that I fully support expanding our existing cannabis organs to include adult use as well as storefront dispensaries. I've lived in Oceanside for 16 years. I've worked on this issue for a long time. Also, just last night at the South Hill Community Meeting, Mayor Sanchez expressed the importance and urgency of local job creation.
Amber, I'm going to pause you right there. We're getting some feedback on our end. Can you turn down the meeting a little bit on your end so we don't get that feedback? We'd like to just understand you, and it's coming out very distorted.
Let's try this. Is that helping?
That's, that's helping a little bit. You may continue.
Is that helping?
No, that's not. We're still getting some feedback on our end, but please continue.
Okay, I apologize. But as I, as I mentioned, Mayor Sanchez was talking about the importance and urgency of local job creation. Continuing this policy that stifles the industry is contrary to that important and urgency. And I honestly don't understand the trepidation. Liquor licenses go largely unopposed, and no one bats an eye at the fentanyl patch manufacturer that is operating within 1,000 feet of a preschool, both of whose products are far more deadly than cannabis. But we're apprehensive and fearful of this plant-based industry. It just, it makes no sense. You've already unchained our cultivators. It's time to do the same for the rest of our local operators as well. Allowing all levels of operation to serve both the medical and adult-use markets not only helps them succeed in these trying times, it creates jobs, it helps deal with the black market, it lets adults shop local instead of taking their dollars elsewhere, and it's also the only way the city will be able to realize the tax revenue they're projecting. It's time for Oceanside to become more business-friendly, and it's time to allow Oceanside adults to openly make their own choices about both their own health care, as well as how they choose to recreate when their workday is done. Please provide direction to staff to move forward on these changes. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Our next public comments from Teri Ann Skelly, to be followed by Erica Leary.
Good evening. Thank you for your hard work in protecting Oceanside citizens, since our residents have been especially hard hits by this pandemic. I have a concern regarding item 20, that we will have delirious effects, the literious, both effects, on my family of three young adult sons, whom encouraging to get a good education and jobs in these confusing times. I see that staff is recommending to council to provide direction on whether to modify city regulations to include regulations to allow for cannabis storefront dispensaries. This seems to be a new item, storefront dispensaries, different from storefronts permitted now, who perform deliveries only. This item, storefront dispensaries, seem to be hidden away under item 12, innocuous titles of cannabis program update synopsis. This idea being presented is far more than an update. It can be life-changing. I wonder if you really understand the consequences for having marijuana storefronts in town with its persuasive signage and advertising. This visibility and promotion threatens, sabotages, and diverts the lives of young people who may well decide that an acceptable form of relaxation, diversion, or digression is getting high. I really don't feel it is the city's job to enable marijuana use in any way. I respectfully ask that you put the good health of Oceanside's young people first and put this idea of storefront dispensaries in the trash can where it belongs. Thank you.
Thank you. Our final public comments from Erica Leary.
Good evening, mayor and councilmembers. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Thank you. My name is Erica Leary. I'm the Program Manager for the North Coastal Prevention Coalition, whose mission is to reduce the harm of alcohol, tobacco, marijuana, and other drugs in the cities of Carlsbad, Oceanside, and Vista through community action, education, support, and collaboration. We've been around over 25 years and are disheartened to continue hearing both locally, countywide, state-level, and federally about the economic benefits of marijuana without honestly addressing the risks, especially for youth. Our youth coalition members at Oceanside High School held a virtual forum last night with national and local experts on this topic, and we wish you could have joined them, but we will have a recording available in the near future. I'd strongly encourage you to conduct a full report of public health impacts and societal costs of commercial marijuana in Oceanside before changing your current local regulations, a report that focuses on youth access and use and impaired driving. The staff report before you tonight includes no such information. Those of us in the prevention field have been disappointed and frustrated that we have yet to find a law enforcement agency that conducts compliance checks either on retail sales or delivery. Just last week, OPD published results of an alcohol decoy operation where two of six stores, or 33%, sold alcohol to the minor decoy. You also passed a tobacco retail license addressing tobacco sales to minors, but we have no information about marijuana sales to minors. And it's not just the black market that contributes to this problem. The medical license continues to create a loophole for those 18- to 20-year-olds who can easily get an online med card, and they can even get it in the lobby of local dispensaries like in Vista. If the council really wishes to have a conversation about expanding to adult use, I think you should also consider discussing the possibility of eliminating the medical market and closing this 18- to 20-year-old loophole. And work closely with OPD to determine how best to prevent youth access, which would include addressing products appealing to youth, such as flavored vaping devices, which you currently allow to be manufactured down the street from my house, gummies, edibles, and beverages. As we continue to face local challenges and global challenges with the pandemic, substance use, mental health, overdose, death rates on the rise, it does not seem appropriate to expand commercial availability of an addictive substance that exacerbates mental illness, impacts lung health, and negatively impacts our youth. Thank you.
Thank you. That concludes the public comment.
Thank you very much. Did staff want to add anything? I see, I see some anxiousness here.
Yeah, Honorable Mayor and councilmembers, I just did want to clarify one point that is in the staff report, and it does, there is a sentence in there that speaks to storefront dispensaries, but to be clear, as far as staff's recommendation goes and what we, you know, think is appropriate to consider tonight, it was not our intent to open up the discussion to storefront dispensaries, rather, it was to limit it to the question as to whether or not we would allow retail, I'm sorry, or adult-use delivery for the type-nine storefront delivery. So I understand that point in the staff report may have been a little bit confusing, but I wanted to clarify the point that that's not something that we were prepared to discuss or, you know, even support at this point in time, quite frankly.
Thank you. And any other comments by staff? No? Okay. Let's go, get, come back to the dais here. Counsel member Weiss?
Yeah, I have a question for Chief Armijo, please. So one of the speakers had indicated that there are a number of illegal deliveries occurring within Oceanside. Do we have any kind of active enforcement campaign against those at this time?
We only have complaint-driven activities. I can tell you, for the last six years, we've averaged between four and six targeted operations at illegal business activity in the cannabis market, and then another six to seven that have been community complaint-driven. The current capacity that we have with our resources is just complaint-driven. We really don't have the capacity to be proactive.
Okay, thank you for that. I guess my point, and I've, I talked to two of the owners of Med Leaf, and I was surprised at the website that they sent me, that if it's even reasonably accurate, the number of deliveries that are occurring in Oceanside, and to me, whether you personally or whether I personally agree with the cannabis industry or not, it is a legal product to be manufactured, distributed, and sold in California. And I think we should offer our businesses a level playing field as it is, until we can get to the point where we can actively enforce. So I'm going to move that we direct, accept staff's report and direct staff to modify city regulations to provide adult-use manufacturing, distribution, and non-storefront dispensaries.
Counsel member Rodriguez?
Thank you for that report. Thank you for the speakers that spoke in. I've reiterated on this topic, I'm a father of seven children, toddler all the way up to adult, married, and I have a personal experience in my past with my father and his drug use and gateway through recreational use in Chicago. And I'm here to tell you and to confirm that 70% of the sales and the transactions that are happening in our city, in our backyard, to our children, is the black market. And as our police chief just said, they do not have the resources or the manpower to proactively go after the illegal bad actors that, that are getting the gummy bears in the hands of our kids. The more local regulation we offer, those resources will come in to actively pursue the illegal market. And I would even like to see, you know, similar programs that we do with our alcohol vendors, you know, sting operation-type dynamic. I don't, I don't mind. Let's keep our businesses accountable. But if we don't have the resources to do so, we're not going to be able to. I would like to second Counsel member Weiss's motion. I just want to clarify, moving adult use to pretty much all of the license holder, all the current licenses that we offer, to be able to, to participate in the adult-use side of the transactions. I would further like to discuss the caps that we currently have on the current licenses. I know with agriculture, we upped it once we had more applications. Can staff answer, is there additional applications that have been received for, for non-storefront delivery? Is there a need for additional licenses in that, in that arena, in that area? Because I know it's difficult to find a location and all those variables, and so I want to know staff's feedback on that.
Counsel member Rodriguez, councilmembers. So as of right now, we have not received more applications for non-storefronts since the original application period for non-storefronts opened in 2018. At that time, the city did receive a number of applications for that use, and three applications received passing scores. Since the city did have the two-number cap, only the top two were issued. At this time, staff is working with that wait-listed applicant, the number-third application, in order to see if we can issue a license to them. At this time, we expect that they will meet the requirements for licensing. If, for whatever reason, they, they cannot meet that, and we have an open space for another non-storefront, staff would open that up. We do have our annual application window that occurs every fall from mid-August to October 1st, so most likely that we would have an answer by then.
Got it. I would just want to consider the potential of either removing that cap or raising it to four, and I wanted to get your feedback on that.
I guess my comment would be is if we get the pressure to increase it, it doesn't appear that we have that need right now, but I'm certainly open to looking at it if we get to that point.
Okay. So just be something, something you'd come back to us with if, right now, I'm hearing there's a third one. We would have to, you would have to come and get our approval on anyway in the future, correct?
Yes. So if we were, if we did want to increase the number of licenses, it would require city council action.
Okay, got it. Okay.
Mr. Mullin, did you have something to add?
I do.
So if I understand the motion correctly, we will have, staff will have to draft the amendments to Chapter 7, but also to Article 36 of the zoning ordinance in order to implement your direction. And those zoning ordinance amendments will have to go to the Planning Commission for a recommendation before it comes back. The language of the zoning ordinance still has medical and adult-use distinctions made in it. So I just wanted to make sure you understood that both sets of regulations would need to be amended to implement this direction.
Thank you. Deputy Mayor Keim?
I think the important part of this process is going slow to find out what mistakes we're making and what we're doing well. Mr. Vontas, do you have any, what is working well? What is not right now? I mean, have we had any challenges in the beginning of this program?
Councilmember Keim, councilmembers. There have been, I guess, some hiccups with implementation. And you'll, a lot of the staff recommendations to address those will come back later today in the form of that municipal code amendment to the odor control and the local license status, as well as the contract amendment with HDL to allow them to have more, to provide more services to the city involving the cannabis program. I think one of the major issues that we're having right now is that it is taking facilities a really long time to get through that conditional use permit process. As you saw from the chart, we have 22 active local licenses, but only 12 conditional use permit applications. So I can't speak for the operators and the license holders, but there seems to be some issue with them submitting that conditional use permit application. So I think that would be the biggest problem right now is trying to address that.
Okay. And also, along the lines of, are we having complaints from the community, from neighbors of any of these businesses? I think that's what I'm more concerned about. I don't want to go too fast and then not be able to address problems successfully. I mean, I think, and that's, when you compare this with alcohol, we've been addressing bars and liquor stores for decades. And so we know there's ABCs actively involved. I think there's a very solid process for it. This is just starting, which is important to go slow. And I think we come back every couple of months and want to go faster and faster again. I am concerned, though, when we have delivery services from outside of our city that can deliver in our city, but we don't have any control over those, correct?
That is correct. So under the state license, or under the state regulations, I should say, cannabis, whether the retailers are located in San Diego County or in Orange County, they can deliver into our city. So there's deliveries from legal dispensaries as well as deliveries from illegal dispensaries as well. So those are two separate delivery avenues. One thing I do want to mention is, right, as I said during my report, right now, we only have Medleaf that's up and operating. We have not received any complaints regarding their operation. I think if you ask most people when they drive by that facility, they won't even know that that facility is open because there is no signage, there's no activity outside, there's no cars outside because they're all parked in the back. So that facility has been able to just blend into that industrial area without any issue.
And I think, and that makes a difference to me, that we have a relationship with Medleaf. We can regulate it and address problems. I can tell you, they've been very proactive and reaching out. That makes a big difference as opposed to someone coming from San Diego or somewhere else that we don't have any oversight over. So I mean, just for tonight, with the manufacturing, distribution, cultivation being adult use. And I think it's semantics with adult use and medical use. Medical use is, from what I understand, is pretty easy to obtain. So I'd also support the motion from Councilmember Weiss, but I do think we need to go slow, especially when it comes to storefronts, so we don't have a negative community impact. Because, I mean, I really do, you know, every three months, if we come back and add it before we've really had a chance to digest the information, the problems, I think, will be very problematic. Thank you.
Councilmember Jensen?
Yes, I think Deputy Mayor Keim addressed several of my questions that I had. Also, it's my understanding that revenue will go to law enforcement to help prevent the illegal distribution. Is that correct?
Councilmember, councilmembers. So to date, we have very minimal Measure M revenue coming in. Since it's a startup industry, they've just started. We've not actually projected revenue into our new budget because it is a startup and we don't have a good track record of what that revenue might be. And at the time that that revenue starts to flow, we will make some recommendations to council, although certainly making sure the police department is well-equipped to do enforcement will be one of the priorities for staff.
Excellent. Okay, thank you. My comments, then, there are no more lights here. I am actually going to vote against this. We actually have not had the opportunity to review any of these businesses because they really are not up and running. Also, the tax that has been set by this council is extraordinarily low. I mean, if we're really concerned about raising funds, which is something that was considered by the state, one of the considerations when the state decided to move this to legalize marijuana, both for recreational and for medicinal. And, you know, we could be actually generating revenue for the city of Oceanside, but we are not. Not at the level that other cities. We are the lowest in the entire county. Number two, the council has not addressed the issues of mitigation and talked about what is really near and dear to my heart, to address the criminalization that has happened, mostly in the Latino communities, who have been, because of the criminalization of drugs, have been hit the hardest. They have been, it is a community that has, is represented in the criminal justice system more than any other. That is, communities of color, black, brown, Asian. It is a very, very difficult situation. And to date, there is nothing that is being discussed about how, you know, whether we should, we are going to be investing in communities of color and addressing issues with respect to drug use, alternatives for our community. So I, you know, this is something I keep bringing up and keeps being ignored. And therefore, to me, it, having neighborhoods that are, you know, it is already legal. Why do we want to commercialize it and, you know, have all these people, all these profits go, but they don't go to the city? So I'm going to be voting against. Deputy Mayor Keim? I thought we were done.
I think going forward, it's very important to me that we actually have a good amount of meaningful data, and not just about the process for the businesses, but the impact to our communities. And I think that's what is lacking from the information we have so far. So before I, we'll support any other changes. I want very robust reporting on neighbor complaints, whether it's odor, sales to minors. Those are things that I'm looking for to determine if we're doing a reasonable job at regulating this industry. And I think, you know, three months, six months with one business is not, doesn't provide you the data sample you need. So before, that's what I'm going to expect. But, you know, I think, it's good to go cautious on this and get it right the first time.
Councilmember Rodriguez? Well, we were going to, but you wanted to, you put your light on? Did you want to say anything else? Okay, let's vote.
Motion approved, 401. Sanchez, no?
Okay, next, it's 6 o'clock. So we are up to our public hearing items. Let's begin with item number 21. It's the presentation of the draft Fiscal Year 2021-2022 Annual Action Plan for Housing and Community Development for Review and Comment. I'd like to open this public hearing and ask the councilmembers and for disclosures.
Staff and representative from one of the agencies. Staff?
Staff, housing specialists, and members of the public.
Staff and members of the public.
Staff.
Do we have any correspondence and our petitions?
All correspondence has been forwarded to the council prior to this meeting.
Okay, thank you. So we're going to go ahead and begin with Cecilia Barandiarron. I could never say your last name. Cecilia?
Good evening, Council, Mayor. Thank you for having me again in front of you to talk about our 2022 Housing and Community Development Annual Plan. It's a mouthful, so... Basically, what we're here for is part of our consolidated plan process. I'm going to go into a little bit more detail than I maybe normally do because some of the members are a little bit newer. But we basically approved last year a five-year consolidated plan. And that plan outlines how we're looking at doing or spending our CDVG and home dollars over the next five years. So every year, we have to go back to city council and present the current, what we're planning on using the funding for the next fiscal cycle. With this plan, it requires public participation, and we'll be opening up the 30-day comment period for public review and comment on the plan. We will be coming back to council for final approval the first meeting in May. So as I said, the annual action plan is a component of that five-year plan that was approved last year. And we have to address certain national and local objectives, such as assisting low-mod populations or clientele. We outline how we're going to use our CDVG and home dollars, and the projects that are presented will have specific performance measurements. This timeline is governed by the federal requirements of the programming. We received several weeks ago what our allocations will be for the next fiscal year. So we know that our allocation for CDVG will be 1.3 million, and we have some program income. Our home allocation is 620, with, again, some program income. So what does that mean? These funds are tied in terms of how we can utilize them. They have great flexibility, but there are certain limits. Those limits are tied to two of those different components. One is public services. They only allow us to spend 15% of that allocation for public services. That amount is identified there as the maximum that we are allowed to spend. We are also proposing money to continue housing rehab, various capital projects that are located at our resource or recreational facilities, code enforcement for next year. The admin is also capped. That cap is at 20%. And then we have a commitment of loan debt to have done the fire station on mission. And that debt service will continue through 2028, I believe. So again, those are the amounts that were presented. The budgets have been attached, or are your attachments there that are outlining how we're proposing spending those funds. We presented to the Housing Commission last night, and they approved the recommendation to present to you. And that's what we're here for, to look at the proposed budget, the outline, and open the public comment period for the next 30 days. I will come back to you again at the first meeting in May to present the final plan and any comments that were received within that timeframe. I'm now open and available for questions.
Thank you, Cecilia. And I understand there are no public comments?
There is no public comment on this item.
Okay, so this is, just to open the public hearing, accept any public comments, and this, therefore, this is going to be continued until, what was the next date?
I believe it's May 5th.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, on to item number 22. This is adoption of a resolution.
My light is on, Esther?
Oh, my apologies.
Yeah.
Of course, we haven't closed the public comment period yet.
On 21?
On 21, yes. It is for public comment.
So a council member can't comment on this item?
Can, okay.
Correct. Yeah, no, I just wanted to bring up, as with funding, grant funding, it needs to be implemented and managed and marketed and, you know, the community to be educated. One of the things I noticed when I first was elected on some of the funding was, the big example I noticed was with the rehabilitation funds. And the, at least then, the lack of applicants and the lack of utilization of those funds and the lost opportunities to help our communities, especially our seniors. So my question and feedback is, what can we do better as a city to use all this money for our community and ensure it gets used and not sent back?
As it relates to the rehab program, we recently hired staff in December to minister that program specifically. We've updated our waiting list. We sent out applications. We have inspections pending. We're just waiting for the protocols to be approved because of the pandemic to actually create the work write-ups and get those jobs moving. So all those pieces have been put into place, and we're anticipating, actually, that program is ramping up.
Thank you. No further comments.
Okay, no other lights? Okay, so this will be continued. Okay, item number 22 is adoption of a resolution establishing inspection fees for commercial cannabis facilities, approval of Amendment 2 to the Professional Services Agreement with Hinder, Lighter, the Yamas and Associates for continued support with the licensing and oversight of cannabis facilities in the amount of $81,000 for a revised contract amount not to exceed $195,750, and authorization for the city manager to execute the amendment. I'd like to open this public hearing this time and request disclosures from the councilmembers.
Staff and one of the cannabis manufacturers.
Staff and the public?
No contact.
Staff and a manufacturer.
Staff.
Thank you. Mr. Nevada, do we have any correspondence and our petitions?
All correspondence has been forwarded to the council prior to the meeting.
Thank you. Beginning now with testimony, presentation by Stephanie Sivantes, planner.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and councilmembers. Again, my name is Stephanie Sivantes with the Planning Division, and I will be presenting the cannabis facility inspection and license renewal fees and Amendment 2 to an existing contract. Staff recommends that the city council adopt a resolution establishing inspection fees for commercial cannabis facilities, approve Amendment 2 to the Professional Services Agreement with Hinder, Lighter, the Yamas and Associates, HDL, in the amount of $81,000 for a revised contract amendment amount not to exceed $195,750 for continued support with the licensing and oversight of cannabis facilities, and authorize the city manager to execute the amendment. Inspections of cannabis facilities are codified in Chapter 7 of the City Code, Article 13, Section 7.126. The City Code has not adopted fees to cover the cost of inspections, audits, or renewals, and are now proposed. In May of 2018, a professional services agreement with HDL was administratively approved to have the firm analyze and recommend regulatory fees and administration of commercial cannabis facilities. In June of 2019, city council approved Amendment 1 through the Professional Services Agreement to include continual review and facilitation of new applications, advisement of license renewal fees, and advisement of regulatory and audit procedures. The proposed amendment with HDL would expand their contract services to include facility inspections, financial audits, and review of renewal applications. HDL provided this chart with annual permit fees for other jurisdictions that they work with. It is important to note that the variation is primarily due to the level of regulatory oversight desired by each agency, and also reflects the use of consultants or contractors, involvement of multiple city staff, and different payroll costs. In general, I'm sorry, the average is about $20,000. the average is about $20,000. At this time, staff is proposing that each facility be physically inspected at least once per year and subject to one annual financial audit per year, as well as the annual local license renewal. The proposed fee for inspection is $1,490. $1,250 would cover the HDL fee, and then an additional $250 to cover two hours of staff time to be onsite during inspections as well as follow-up. The proposed fee for the annual audit is $6,120 to cover $6,000 of the HDL fee, as well as one hour of staff time to review reports. The local license renewal fee is proposed at $1,240 to cover the $1,000 HDL fee, and two hours of staff time to send renewal notices and take applications, review HDL recommendation, and issue new local license. The total cost to the facilities would be $8,850 for one annual inspection, or $10,340 for two onsite inspections per year. Amendment 2 to the professional services agreement with HDL would be for continued support with the licensing and oversight of cannabis facilities in the amount of $81,000 for the revised contract amount not to exceed $195,000. Staff recommends that city council adopt a resolution establishing inspection fees for commercial cannabis facilities, approve Amendment 2 to the professional services agreement with HDL, and authorize the city manager to execute the amendment. Thank you, and I am available for questions.
Thank you. I understand we have seven speakers on this item?
Yeah, it's actually eight. We did find a speaker that did register before 4 o'clock.
Okay, let's hear from the public.
Our first public comment is from Erica Leary, to be followed by Gracie Morgan, to be followed by David Newman. And Ms. Leary, whenever you're ready.
Good evening, mayor and council. Still me, still Erica Leary, program manager with North Coastal Prevention Coalition, resident of Oceanside. I think I made most of my comments at the previous item, but I'd just like to reiterate my concern that this fee with an annual visit is, we're still not addressing the youth access concern. A complaint-driven approach is not sufficient to understand whether or not kids are getting access to marijuana from legal businesses, illegal, or both, or from friends. Like, many years ago, in the early 2000s, we did a big push for social host ordinances because we learned that minors were getting alcohol primarily at house parties from older friends and siblings. So those of us in prevention have been asking for close to a year now about what protocols are developed for compliance checks for delivery and sales, and we haven't found anyone that has any answers. The Bureau of Cannabis Control doesn't have a protocol, local law enforcement agencies don't have the resources, and we don't even know what the penalties are. So as you discuss this item, and as Councilmember Keim commented about moving slowly and cautiously and getting accurate data, we need to understand what the penalties are and what tools the city will have to ensure compliance with the local businesses, whether it's cultivation, manufacturing, or delivery or distribution. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next public comments from Gracie Morgan, to be followed by David Newman, to be followed by Becky Rapp.
Good evening, council. Again, this is still Gracie. As stated before, we are, Medleaf is the first and only delivery service, and over the last two years, we have worked closely with council and with planning to develop and implement ways to do this the right way. We do think that in this moment, we could benefit from piloting this also together. And in that, we would love to have council and staff come to our facility to do a tour. We have sent in several invites, but due to the pandemic, we understood that was not an ability at that time. Now, as we start to move forward and things are lifting, we would love for you to come and tour our facility to recognize the differences that lie between what we are here doing in an office building versus what manufacturing, distribution, and cultivation is all doing with many more challenges in their way as far as compliance goes. Typically, the best way to describe our business is like a delivery service of any other, which is prepackaged goods, far more, or far fewer, I should say, items in general to go through. So we do invite staff, we invite council to our building, and we do hope that we can find something that works as far as a fee schedule that isn't a one-size-fits-all for all cannabis businesses, because we are all very different. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next public comment is from David Newman, to be followed by Becky Rapp, to be followed by Carol Green. Mr. Newman, whenever you're ready.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
All right, great. David Newman, Oceanside resident, business owner, and advocate. In looking at the proposed cannabis business fees, it looks like the city wants $1,490 for an onsite compliance inspection, $6,120 for an annual audit, and the annual renewal of a local license would cost an additional $1,240. Given the proposed physical inspection of twice per year, that was in staff's report, but seems to be presented differently here as once per year. The new established cannabis businesses are going to be hit with no less than $10,340 per year just to exist. To justify the onsite compliance inspection of $1,490, staff suggested require about two hours to complete the inspection, making their hourly fee $745, while paying its consultants, HDL, $81,000 to also perform audits. For $81,000 per year, why is staff doing anything at all? Keep in mind that HDL consultants are also the ones who erroneously omitted odor control from our local regulations. I can't help but wonder how much Oceanside is charging Sparsha Pharma, our local fentanyl patch manufacturer, for inspections or audits. Yet, the National Institute on Drug Abuse states deaths involving other synthetic opioids other than methadone, primarily fentanyl, continue to rise with more than 36,359 overdose deaths reported in 2019. Alcohol is responsible for 88,000 deaths per year in the U.S., yet Oceanside performs zero inspections on bars, breweries, or wineries, costing those businesses nothing more than a simple business license and possibly a conditional use permit on a yearly basis. Still, the Institute of Medicine Reports states that data indicate that in the general population, marijuana use is not associated with increased mortality. While I realize some other cities, not San Diego, by the way, charge their cannabis industry excessive fees, I think we can all agree this does nothing but fuel the black market. At a time when Oceanside should be creating or catering to more businesses that might employ our residents and pay sales tax and property taxes, it makes little sense to continue to bombard these businesses with excessive taxes and fees before they are even able to get off the ground floor. Fees are nothing more than a tax that doesn't have to be approved by the local voters and are an easy way to stifle the industry from coming to Oceanside. I would ask that the taxes collected on local cannabis industry be used for any inspections or audits, and that we can discontinue our paid relationship with HDL Consulting. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Our next public comment is from Becky Rapp, to be followed by Carol Green, to be followed by Christian Box. Becky, whenever you're ready.
Good evening, Oceanside City Council. My name is Becky Rapp. Although I registered to speak to item 22, I would also like to address some of the comments made by council regarding item number 20 that also have applicability to item 22's attention to costs of marijuana businesses to the city. I appreciated Mayor Sanchez's comments as she recognizes the concerns that many community members share. Changing the terminology of medicinal marijuana to recreational marijuana sends a message of normalcy. Although you and I know it's the same product, packaged the same way, children and teens will now think differently. It sends a message to them that this is a product to use. This is a dangerous message to send. Just last night, the principal of Oceanside High School spoke to parents and teens via a Zoom meeting regarding the struggle and deep concern he has for the vast number of students struggling with mental health issues and their belief that marijuana can help them. I'm also very concerned with Councilmember Rodriguez's comments regarding raising the limit of marijuana outlets. No one is asking for this, and we still haven't seen what ramifications will come from the current approved locations. Regarding the cost of enforcement, HDL has stated in the objectives that they will conduct two onsite inspections annually, who will perform inspections on deliveries, ensuring marijuana does not get into the hands of minors. The BCC has admitted to not performing any minor decor operations, and I would strongly suggest asking law enforcement to perform these operations. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Our next public comment is from Carol Green, to be followed by Christian Box, to be followed by Kathleen Lippett. Carol, whenever you're ready.
Good evening, Oceanside, and mayor and city council members. My name is Carol Green, and I've spoken to you before. I want to first correct a couple things that I've heard just to make sure that we all are dealing with facts and not just something that's made up. First of all, we can't talk about plant-based industries as though they're harmless. There are many poisons that are plant-based, and that's just a fact. I'm not going to list them because that would be irresponsible of me to do in a public meeting, but they're pretty easy to find out, and we all know that. So there's no sense in saying that it's plant-based, so therefore it's harmless. Also, yes, we know that this is a legal product, but it's a legal product with a conditional use permit. The reason there's a conditional use permit is to try to, some way, protect our children and families. The other thing I want to mention is that let's get some real statistics on what part of the black market this is actually dealing with, because I think throwing out that 70% of the black market is irresponsible if you don't actually have those statistics. And I just want to tell you about the harms, because everyone seems to say that this is not harmless. We are in a situation now where we know that our youth are dealing with mental health challenges like they never have before, and an industry where a lot of people are making money, which we've already said, but not the city of Oceanside, is telling people that this is a place to turn. Unfortunately, you can read the statistics about the high percentages of people that have experienced psychosis, anxiety, and other mental health disorders after ingesting THC, including a flight attendant who died after ingesting a gummy bear just a little while ago. But those statistics are numbers, and my story is real, because my son used THC to alleviate some anxiety, and it ended up triggering in him a psychotic episode. And the reason you see me here tonight, and you'll see me again, and I'm not going to go away, is because the first time I knew how horrible this psychotic episode was, he went to the Army Recruit Center, and they called me and told me he was there because he was worried that there were spies trying to get him. And he ran into my arms, my 22-year-old son, who is brilliant, and said to me, "Mom, there's something wrong with my head. I don't know what's wrong. Can you help me?" And I promised him then that I would help him. I told him, "I'll get you help," and we went to the ER, and we waited for four hours, and he cycled through, and he cycled through. And we got him some help for a little while, and I obviously don't have time to tell the whole story, but I'm telling you at the time that he was walking down the street in Kearney Mesa, and I was screaming after him to come back, come back, and the security guard told me, "Just let him go. Don't worry about it. Just give up. Stop worrying. This is a worthless cause." I'm telling you, Michael died last December, but I'm not going to give up on him, and I'm not going to give up on you, and I'm not going to give up on the rest of these kids, because people don't realize how dangerous this is. And I don't care if you get sick of me, or if you all think I'm a fool. It's a legal product, but it has a lot of dangers involved, and it's your responsibility as a city council to protect the citizens. You already know you're not making very much money. You already know there are problems involved. Please go slowly with the rest of the decisions you make, because not just my child, but lots of kids are suffering from the decisions that you're making. Please choose the children rather than the money. Thank you.
Could you please wrap up your comments? My apologies, but...
Choose the children, not the money. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Our next public comment is from Christian Box, and I apologize if I'm mispronouncing your first name, to be followed by Kathleen Lippett, to be followed by Gina Austin. Christian Box, or Chris Deon Box, you're on. You're muted. Can you please unmute yourself? Chris, Chris Deon Box, B-O-C-S? You're very, very faint. We'll come back to you. Our next public comment is from Kathleen Lippett, to be followed by Gina Austin.
Good morning, excuse me, good evening, mayor and council. My name is Kathleen Lippett. My colleagues and I strive to provide information, data, and science-based research to raise the community's capacity to make informed decisions. Significantly, the information we provide is free of economic conflicts of interest. And along those lines, the comment we just heard that contended marijuana is not associated with increased mortality is categorically not correct. Bertha Madras, who is a famous Harvard psychobiologist and world-famous researcher, cited the study that says that marijuana use disorder is associated with higher mortality. A massive study was undertaken to understand mortality rate of methamphetamine users in relation to other drug users. The results were, for addiction to cannabis, had a higher mortality rate, 3.85 times higher than controls, higher if compared to death rate risk of cocaine use, higher than alcohol use disorder, but lower than opioid use disorder or methamphetamine use disorder. That's not economically conflicted information. City leaders were elected to serve their constituents. The priorities of those constituents who elected you should be your highest priority. They continue to cite priorities such as infrastructure, safe streets, crime-free communities, parks, and educational opportunities. As the marijuana industry's political influence grows, public priorities are suborned on behalf of the marijuana industry's priorities. It's a Faustian bargain to offer your residents to the marijuana industry in exchange for tax money. The only interest the industry has in your residents is for the profit they can make from them. They are neither accountable nor responsible for the public good. You are. Marijuana tax money does not compensate parents who have or will lose children to drug abuse, addiction, or vehicle fatalities. Cost considerations are incomplete unless they factor in the data and research evidence of harms. The human cost should be your highest priority. The state has decriminalized marijuana, but cities have the authority to say no to regulations, as 80% of California cities and counties have done. A cursory examination of state costs to create the necessary bureaucracies needed to legalize marijuana per Prop 64 appear to be about $1.2 billion. The state also estimated tax revenues could be hundreds of thousands of dollars and could be as much as a billion. Those are very vague terms, and it could say 100 billion. Anyway, and so no surprise, no cost-benefit analysis of the societal cost was, were anticipated. Those costs will be substantial, as the number of those abused...
Ms. Lippett, could you wrap up your comments, please?
Yes. To high potency marijuana products grows. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you. Our next public comment is from Gina Austin, and then we're going to circle back to Christian Box. And we're getting Ms. Austin on the line?
Yeah.
All right, whenever you're ready.
Good afternoon or evening, city council members and mayor. My name is Gina Austin, and I did provide a letter with regard to the fees related to the cannabis tax. I believe that the most important part of the cannabis inspection fees is to follow the suggestion... the suggestion by Medleaf, which is not a one-size-fits-all fee. There are multiple reasons for having inspections on parcels that, at the same time when they have multiple licenses. There are also situations where you cannot do that, because the multiple licenses may be held by multiple different entities. I look forward to working with staff and the city in creating a licensing inspection scheme that is both just and cost-effective. Thank you.
Thank you. And we're going to try Christian Box again. First name is spelled K-R-I-S-Z-T-I-A-N, last name B-O-C-S. You are now on.
Good evening, Mayor Sanchez and City Councilmembers. My name is Christian Box, and I'm one of the owners of Medleaf. We appreciate you taking the time to listen to us today. As we are the only cannabis business currently operating in the city of Oceanside, we ask that you evaluate the proposed renewal schedules due to one-size-fits-all rules as well. Our facility runs much like a regular business office with prepackaged goods. We do not have any heavy equipments or any materials that need to be put together on our property. Medleaf, our company, has very good procedures, and we are extremely simplified and streamlined. Renewals should not take up multiple man-hours or resources away from the city. Therefore, we ask to consider a fair and adjusted renewal fee schedule for our non-storfront retail delivery. Thank you for your time and consideration.
That concludes the public comment.
Thank you. Back to staff for any further comments. Do you have any further comments? Yes, we do.
Honorable Bill, Mayor, and Councilmembers, there are a couple of points that I want to clarify in response to some of the public comments that were received. Clearly, in our discussions with the cannabis operators here that we have in the city, we want to be fair in terms of the way that we're structuring this fee program. And so, as was kind of mentioned by some of the folks that provided testimony this evening, we do have flexibility in terms of the fees that we, or the number of inspections, for example, that we would be committed to providing on these facilities. So some of the assumptions, just so it's clear, some of the assumptions that are in the staff report assume kind of a worst-case scenario, if you will. In other words, when you look at some of the cumulative fees, for example, they assume two inspections per year. As we've discussed internally, and I've discussed with some of the cannabis operators, that may not be necessary. And I think, for example, the Medleaf operator brought up whether or not it would be necessary to inspect their facility twice a year. It may not. So the way that the fees are structured on the inspections, it is a per-inspection fee. So if we find that we don't need to be inspecting facilities multiple times a year, we won't be doing that. I also want to clarify that the $81,000 contract amount with HDL, that assumes, again, a worst-case scenario. I don't expect that we're going to be paying them this much for their services, because if you read their proposal, that assumes that they are inspecting and monitoring eight cannabis businesses at the full rate, including two annual inspections. And again, I don't think we're going to necessarily be in that situation. Certainly, it'll be probably many years before we get to inspecting eight cannabis businesses. So again, that's just kind of a worst-case scenario. So I just wanted to point that out, because, A, I don't want the council or the public assuming that we're immediately paying HDL $81,000 a year out the gate. That's kind of more of a long-term, once we have eight businesses operating, if we assume that we were going to be inspecting them twice annually. The only thing that I would say is that what we do expect to happen is we do expect to at least do one annual financial audit. I think that's very important, that we need to do that for all businesses, at least...
At the very least, yeah.
...to ensure, especially in light of the cannabis tax that we recently passed, to make sure that we're collecting the fair amount of taxes due. And I do think, at a minimum, we probably would be inspecting facilities at least once annually as well. With respect to the comments that were made reflective of this being a startup industry and startup business, remember that the financial audits and the inspections aren't going to be taking place until these businesses are up and running. It's not something that we're going to be performing audits and inspections before they open their doors, so they will have some time to generate revenue to offset the costs. So thank you. I just wanted to clarify those points.
Thank you. Any other comments? Okay, so I'm going to close this portion of the public hearing, bringing this back to the council. A councilmember Rodriguez for discussion.
Can you elaborate on the, you kind of touched base on the business audit, annual audit fee. Are we overlapping any activities that the state performs on an annual basis?
To my knowledge, no. I think what we will really be doing, and we do have a representative from HDL available, by the way, and so some of these questions may be more appropriate for them, but it's my understanding that the audit is primarily going to be taking a look at their local business activities, making sure that they're reporting everything that they should be reporting in terms of their financial transactions. I can't really speak specifically to what the state...
Yeah, I would actually like to hear from HDL if they're here. I want to hear from the source on what they're going to be doing and some tangible activities they're going to be doing outside of what the state already does or doesn't do.
Are they available by Zoom?
That's what we're trying to find out, if they are on the line or not.
We can, I can continue a little bit. I know some of the taxation is tied to amounts that we can check with the state on what's being reported, and we get a percentage of that. Is that correct? We collect with some of the businesses pretty similar to what the state does, and so we can, if we needed to check, we could look at what the state is collecting, and then we could match that up as far as weight or sales, dry sales, or what have you. If you can elaborate on that.
Yeah, and certainly, I would expect that would be part of that audit process, would be to making sure that whatever is being reported to us locally reconciles with what's being reported at the state level as well.
Okay. Next question is, what other vendors, it seems like we've been working with these vendors, this consultant firm, who is supposed to have the leading-edge experience in dealing with cannabis, the cannabis industry, yet they did fail our city in providing details and information on the odor ordinances and those sort of dynamics, and now we're just being brought forward with these fees. So these are kind of things that have been, we've caught after the fact, and we're learning, but is that not something that they should have brought to us? Or maybe they did, and we just didn't implement it?
Yeah, and that's a good question. And so, to be clear, HDL was not involved and under contract when we were developing our local ordinance, so they weren't advising us on this, so I don't necessarily...
Can I, and I could probably jump in on that. I wrote the ordinance. There's probably 25 to 50 different versions of it that were written, along with the ad hoc committee. And as you'll hear later tonight, the ordinance does address odor control, the current one. So I wouldn't agree with the characterization that it was failed, because there are provisions about odor control within Chapter 7. Right now, the item you'll hear later tonight deals with more specific requirements as the process has evolved. So there are going to be changes to that ordinance, because we couldn't anticipate every single little issue that came up during the years of drafting the ordinance.
Got it. No, and that makes perfect sense. I guess what I was getting at is, is there, at what point would we consider contracting with a different consultant that maybe is less burdening financially to businesses and performs the same activities?
Yes, and that's a very good question. It's something that we have discussed internally. So we have, as you mentioned, have been contracting with HDL since the inception of our program outside of the ordinance preparation. We are not fixed with HDL for a specific period of time, and so I do think that there is value at some point in the future to go out and make sure that we're getting the best bang for our buck, and certainly are prepared to do that at some point in time in the future. So I would probably expect, I would say, at the earliest, maybe within the next year, to go out and just make sure that, again, that we're getting the best bang for our buck. It's good practice, so...
Absolutely. Are they on? HDL, are you on?
Yes. This is Mark Lovelace of HDL.
Yes, sir. I would just like for you to briefly go over what exactly you do with your business audits for the $6,120 fee that we're going to be passing on to the businesses. What does that accomplish, and are you overlapping anything that the state does?
And could you restate your name, restate your name again? Didn't come in very clearly.
Yes. My apologies that I received late notice about attending the meeting, and I am in the car, so I apologize for any additional noise. My name is Mark Lovelace. I'm a senior policy advisor with HDL Companies. By way of background, I'm formerly a member of the Board of Supervisors in Humboldt County, where I dealt with cannabis issues for eight years or more. So first off, to the question of, do our audits do anything? Do they overlap with anything that the state does? The answer is no. The state is only looking for the state cannabis tax dollars, and there's no part of that, of anything that the state may do, that would in any way be looking at a local cannabis tax, and whether or not that's being assessed properly or remitted properly. Our audit, which, by the way, as seen in the proposal that is attached to your item, the cost for our audit is $6,000. The additional cost is for, on the city's side, for processing what we provide back to the city, which is a very minor amount, as you can see from the cost reflected there. And our audit, what we do is we look for, we take the remittance that's provided by the city, and then we compare that with a number of different documents that we're able to get, including the CGTFA tax returns, federal tax returns. We look at data from the point-of-sale system that we're able to access from the business, and a number of other sources that may be available. And we take all of those, and we look for anything that is either outliers or discrepancies, where something is reported differently here than there. And then we go in and we try to determine what causes that discrepancy. And that's a significant issue, because there are different reporting requirements to the Department of Tax and Fee Administration than there is to the local government. And so we have to be able to make sure that even though the numbers are different, that that difference is outside of the bounds of where it should be. The cost for the service, there are a number of other firms out there doing similar-type work. As best as I'm aware, we do offer the lowest price on that. The fees that are assessed by different cities for annual renewals of permits, the lowest end of the range that we've seen is, I believe, $8,900 about. And the high end, the city of San Jose, which is a complete outlier, is $143,000 a year for renewal of a permit. The average that we see among those is around $39,000. If we take out that outlier from San Jose, which really wrecks the curve, brings it down to around $20,000 as the average fee, the average permit renewal fee for cannabis business in California. The cost that we're seeing here that's going to be, depending upon the number of inspections done, would be somewhere between, yes, $8,250, I believe, and perhaps $9,500 would put this at the very low end of that spectrum.
Yeah, we got all that in the staff report. The last quick question, this is a cash business. Cash is king. How do we, as a city, ensure that these cash transactions, we're collecting tax on those cash transactions? If you can answer that.
And that's exactly the intent of doing the audit, because this is still a cash-heavy There needs to be some corroboration of this. So along with the other documents that I mentioned before, we also look at bank statements. We look at ATM merchant statements. We look at all the different things that indicate how much cash is coming in, going in and out of the business. In particular, the point-of-sale system is one of the primary data sources that we look at for corroborating this. But along with that, we have to look at the type of sale, whether the city assesses taxes differently for adult use or medicinal use. We have to look at refunds and returns, and all of these different things to come at a true picture of what the actual gross receipts of the business was within the allotted
And I'm sorry, but everything just went silent, so I don't know if my connection...
Sorry. That was because your comments, once your comments concluded, we're back to discussing by councilmembers on the dais here. So I do not have any lights on. We don't have a motion yet?
I'll make a call to the deputy...
Okay, there's a motion by Deputy Mayor Keim, second by Councilmember Weiss. My comments, I do have concerns that we are not including all the potential costs of this program. The impacts to the community, again, we do need to, I agree with some of the speakers, that we do need to consider the analysis and monitoring a lot more closely. Doesn't have to be by DHL, is that the name of the company? It can be staff, but it would also include staff time. So I am concerned about that. However, I am supporting the motion, only because these do need to be recovered. This is cost recovery, basically, and we do need to have the inspections and the fees. So, Mr. Mullen?
Yeah, I just want to clarify, the motion includes the contract amendment, which is not part of the resolution. So the resolution is just the fees. I hear, I see a nod, yes.
I have a motion for staff recommendation.
Right. And there was a second. Okay, and let's see if Mr. Mullen has to do anything else here. Nope. Let's vote. Yeah, it is adopt the resolution and approve the amendment.
Motion approved, 5-0.
Okay, we're on to item number 23. Is there a need for a break at all on the dais here? No? Okay, let's go ahead and plow through. Next one is item number 23. That's introduction of an ordinance amending the Oceanside Municipal Code, Chapter 7, Article 8, excuse me, 13, X10. 13, cannabis facilities to incorporate language pertaining to odor control and local license status. I'd like to open the public hearing and request disclosures by councilmembers.
Staff. Staff and public.
Staff.
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 Okay. Mr. Navarro, any correspondence on our petitions?
All correspondence has been forwarded to the council prior to the meeting.
Thank you. And again, we are going to be hearing testimony from Ms. Cervantes, city planner.
Good evening, again, councilmembers, mayor. Again, my name is Stephanie Cervantes with the Planning Division, and I will be presenting the cannabis facility municipal code amendment. Staff recommends that the city council introduce an ordinance amending the Oceanside Municipal Code, Chapter 7, Article 13, cannabis facilities to incorporate language pertaining to odor control and local license status. In the course of program implementation, staff has received several inquiries and concerns regarding potential impacts of cannabis odors from future businesses. The existing language allows the city manager to deny a new application or suspend or revoke an existing license if the license will cause odors. However, the code does not provide... However, the code does not provide clear language on how to address odors created during operations or requirements for the facilities or process for correction of potential cannabis odor issues. Regarding the local license, the code states that prior to initiating operations and as a continued requisite to operate a cannabis facility, the legal representative of the persons wishing to operate a cannabis facility shall first obtain a local license from the city manager and then a conditional use permit pursuant to all applicable provisions of the Oceanside zoning ordinance. The intent is for a business to continually maintain a local license. However, that is not clear and has created an issue with at least one business. The proposed amendment provides clear direction on the need to provide and maintain odor-controlled devices and techniques and describes where odor is not allowed, which includes any common walkways, common ways, or anywhere outside of the facility, of the licensed facility. The proposed language would also allow a site inspection to identify any odor issues and allow the facility to correct any odor control issues. Regarding the license status, the provision would, the language would add a provision that a local license must be valid and maintained during the CUP process. It clarifies that a valid local license has not only to be obtained prior to application, but also for it to be issued. On March 8th of this year, the Planning Commission voted 7-0 recommending approval of the proposed municipal code amendment. And then I do want to clarify that there was a typo in the odor control language, which needs to be corrected to Deputy City Manager, John, I'm sorry, I forgot the language.
Development Services.
Development Services. Development Services Director versus Community Development Director. At this time, staff recommends that the City Council introduce an ordinance amending the Oceanside Municipal Code, Chapter 7, Article 13, Cannabis Facilities, to incorporate language pertaining to odor control and local license status.
Just to clarify the record, that reference in 7.126 right now, it says Community Development Director. That's a position that doesn't exist, so it should be Development Services Director. And assuming you introduced this tonight, we'll make that correction before it's adopted.
Ms. Cervantes, any other comments?
No, I am available for questions.
Okay, thank you very much. I understand we have five speakers. Let's hear from them, three minutes each.
That is correct. Our first public comment is from Carol Jimenez, to be followed by Carol Green, to be followed by Barbara Gordon. And Ms. Jimenez, you are on.
Thank you. Madam Mayor, members of the council, the bottom line of my input this evening is the overall environmental impact of the Zenleaf cultivation project, but also any other cannabis cultivation operations in close proximity to residential areas, and that anything less than 100% odor mitigation isn't good enough. But addressing only the odor from the cannabis cultivation is also not enough. But before I get to that, I would like to address Zenleaf's responses to citizen comments on March 10th through their legal representative. And for the record, my name is Carol Jimenez and not Carol Hernandez. And although you may not have heard from me before last week's meeting, you're hearing from me now, and I have legitimate environmental impact concerns that have not been addressed with any real data. Regarding which residence is mine, as you refer to the closest residence fence, that's where I live. Quick note, I don't recall hearing any reference to the public walking path, which is much closer to the project than my property. The Zenleaf legal rep reported that they received only a few responses to their outreach program. I submit that the lack of response is more a reflection of the ineffectiveness of the advertisement-like postcard used and not the level of interest in the surrounding community. I recommend that they use envelopes in any future outreach program. I agree with the legal rep that the waiver process is in place for legitimate exceptions in certain situations, like when driveways encroach on easements and such, but this is not that. As evidence that Zenleaf is a good neighbor, the legal rep cited an existing cannabis facility located in a huge industrial park by Carroll Canyon Road, but comparing an industrial facility with industrial neighbors does not translate to a residential district with residential neighbors. The legal rep also stated the facility will not be visible to overlooking houses, yet 10 acres of security lighting is more than a couple of lights on the side of a barn, a literally half the size of the Walmart shopping center on College Boulevard, and downlit or not, it will be visible for miles. Exhaust fans emitting noise 24 hours a day is much different than tractors plowing during working hours. What is the decibel output? How far away can they be heard? How will the noise affect wildlife? Can you reference any other environmental studies that include this fan noise? No EIR means not addressing light and noise and whatever else comes up during an environmental study. EIRs are costly and time-consuming, but more importantly, they are informative. The city should have required one. The Zenleaf legal rep believes that the SEQA references are proper. I counter that existing facilities in reconstruction is a minor part of the project, the major part being the introduction of cannabis cultivation close to a residential area. And the council is obligated to comply with not just the letter of the law, but the spirit of the law. Using the legal rep's point of the legitimacy of waivers for exceptions, there is also a legitimate reason for the spirit of the law requirement, which is clearly stated in the city's code of ethics. You cannot use the argument of exceptions in one application and then refute it in another. The legal rep mentioned that there will be, and I quote, "no impact to residences." However, that is an impossible claim. It's not whether or not it will happen. The real question is, how bad will it be? We know from case studies that marijuana operations have created extremely undesirable conditions around their grow locations, negatively impacting surrounding neighborhoods.
Ms. Jimenez, could you wrap up your comments? Please?
Yes.
Thank you.
The city council has an opportunity now to take steps to ensure that the quality of life for the citizens of Oceanside is protected. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Our next public comment is from Carol Green, to be followed by Barbara Gordon, to be followed by Judy String.
Good evening again. I just won't go into details this time. You've heard my story. Just want to remind you that there are some harms involved, and I would encourage you to calculate out the costs and benefit. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Our next public comment is from Barbara Gordon. And she, apparently she is not in the room, so we'll move on to our next public comment. Judy String, to be followed by Kelly McCormick. And Judy String is also not in the room, so we'll move on to Kelly McCormick, who is in the room.
Good evening, council members. This is Kelly McCormick. I'm a parent, and I've been working on environmental issues since long before it became a widespread topic of conversation. And you're wise to create a plan for responding to odor complaints. This is a pervasive problem with this industry. Pot farming and manufacturing businesses in San Diego have racked up numerous complaints and even lawsuits from neighbors of these businesses who have experienced headaches, rashes, and other ailments due to breathing the noxious fumes. But odor isn't the only problem. A new report from Colorado State University finds that indoor marijuana grows have a significant carbon footprint. A new report, the new report reveals that emissions from growing just one ounce of marijuana is about the same as burning seven to 16 gallons of gasoline. Consider this, Colorado is the 10th largest coal-producing state in the U.S. However, indoor marijuana farming already has a bigger carbon footprint than coal mining. In fact, the emissions of carbon dioxide are 30% higher from pot farming than from coal mining. The main culprit is the natural gas and electricity needed to maintain high-intensity grow lights around the clock and environmental controls like heating, air conditioning, ventilation systems, and dehumidifiers. California already produces many times more marijuana than it consumes. So where is the sense in adding even more to the glut, knowing that cultivation also contributes to climate change? Outdoor pot farms, of course, have their own problems, including the use of pesticides, fungicides, and rodenticides, heavy water usage, and yes, also odor. Thank you.
Thank you. And Judy String is in the room, so now we'll move on to Judy String.
Hello, can you hear me okay?
Yes, we can, whenever you're ready.
Okay. Good evening, Judy String here. I'm here on behalf of my son and daughter-in-law, who live near one of the cultivation sites that was reviewed at the Planning Commission a couple of weeks ago. And I concur with the first speaker that it was not a careful consideration of the issues associated with odor. And they did say that they felt that they had contacted the neighbors and hadn't really heard anything, so that seemed to be a sense of no one cared. And I think Carol's observation that the noticing was really inadequate. The other thing that was totally inadequate was the signage on the building. My son went over to take a look at the site, and it mentioned that there was going to be a cultivation site there, but it did not indicate what was going to be cultivated. I think it's really important that your signage be clear, that this is cultivation that includes marijuana, very different than growing roses on a site. I also just want to respond to some information, if you don't mind, in item 22, because this is something I know a lot about, and that's regarding the state doing annual audits. The Bureau of Cannabis Control opened up their quarterly advisory meetings to Zoom, so many of us got to participate through this last year. And the BCC has made it very clear that they're totally understaffed, and they are not able to do the type of audits and oversights that the community has required of them. We, as parents, asked while we were on there, couldn't they please at least do minor decoy operations of their deliveries? And they indicated they were incapable of doing that as well. So we can't look to the state to do these things on our behalf. My other concern that I would want to mention to you about the regulation language that has to do with ordinance, it seems to be unclear what would happen if a applicant violated the odor ordinance. It says in the language, any failure on the part of the business to comply with this odor complaint will be subject to an inspection, which is pretty iffy. And then it goes on to say that they could be fined once, twice, and it looks like forever without any action actually being taken that might put an end to a cultivation site that was really creating havoc for the residents. I think something more defined needs to be in your ordinance. Thank you.
Thank you. And we are unable to find Barbara Gordon in the room, so that concludes the public comment.
Thank you. Back to staff. There was one question in there. The last speaker sounded like how many complaints would and what kind of action would result from that, perhaps? Mr. Mullen could respond to that as well.
Yes. Well, if a CUP is operated in violation of the terms and conditions of the use permit, it is subject to revocation. That's one remedy. Every local license also has to be renewed annually. One of the reasons we have a dual licensing structure is a CUP runs with the land, and so you could end up with an operator that you did not approve through initially. So the local license ensures that you have control over that. That local license has to be renewed annually. If there are issues with it, the CUP could be revoked. We could also deal with the revocation of a local license or nonapproval of it. There's additional remedies. There's administrative citations set forth in the city code, as well as in Section 7.131. Every violation of the local license could be a public nuisance, which could be abated through a civil action. So there's a whole variety of options that are available to us, probably more options for violations of this type of use than any other use permit.
Right. So that wasn't included in the presentation? That was a good question that was asked by the public. Any other comments by staff?
Mayor Sanchez, council members, yeah. So one thing I did want to clarify is that the city does not allow any outdoor grows. The cultivation facilities do have to be, do have to be in secured structure. So I know there was a couple of public comments regarding odors of outdoor grows. The City of Oceanside does not allow that.
Great. Okay, I'm going to go ahead and close this portion of the public hearing, go back to the council for discussion and motion. No lights. Councilmember Weiss, would you like to make the motion here? Oh, Councilmember Rodriguez.
I have one question before I move forward on supporting this. One of the, one of the speakers referenced 100% mitigation of odor and a trail that the public walks on that's closer to the facility. Can you just elaborate on the percentage of odors and those sort of dynamics that we may have to deal with in the future? Percentage of odor elimination? I don't even know how that's, how you even measure that.
Yes, Councilmember Rodriguez, council members. So the way that the ordinance is written and the way that staff intends to administer it, it does not allow any odors outside of the cannabis facility. So there is a strict prohibition on any outside odors.
So if you're walking right outside the building and you smell the cannabis, then they're in violation?
That's correct. The way that facilities have been licensed thus far and the way that this code language reads, they need to implement either HVAC systems, air filtration systems, provide some sort of mechanical or structural way of containing that odor inside of that building.
Is there any sort of, is that what kind of the annual inspection is also going to probably address?
That's correct.
Other than community complaints, of course? Okay, perfect. I'll make a motion to approve staff's recommendations on this item.
Okay, there's a motion to introduce the ordinance. Is there a second? Okay, there's a second. No other comments? All right, please vote.
I need to introduce the ordinance really quick. This is the introduction of an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Oceanside, amending Chapter 7 of the Oceanside City Code by the amendment of Article 13 regarding cannabis facilities.
Thank you. Please vote.
Motion approved, 5-0.
Thank you. Item number 24, there are no advanced written requests to reserve time to speak. So we're now on item number 25. I understand we have seven speakers, is that correct?
That is correct. We have seven speakers on items off of the agenda. Our first public comment is from Risa Breuer, to be followed by Ken Layton, to be followed by Dirk Akima.
Thank you, and this is for three minutes each.
All right, Risa, whenever you're ready.
Hello. Thank you, Honorable Mayor Sanchez and City Council members, for this opportunity to present an important issue to the City of Oceanside. My name is Risa Breuer, and I live on Diamante Way in Oceanside with my husband and two children. I'm presenting a petition that I've conducted on removing the Rancho del Oro Highway 78 interchange from the general plan. And as of right now, this petition has been signed by 697 Oceanside citizens. The petition reads, the Rancho del Oro, Rancho del Oro between Oceanside Boulevard and Vista Way is a residential thoroughfare. It is crossed by children and parents accessing McCalliv Elementary School. The interchange does not have funding support from Caltrans or Sandag, and so the financial plan for the city to pay for this interchange, which would cost approximately $70 million or more, would require either raising taxes or cutting city services or both. Building its Highway 78 Rancho del Oro interchange will negatively impact the Rancho del Oro residential area by increasing air pollution, noise pollution, and truck traffic that is out of scale for a residential area. It will increase vehicle traffic to levels that will drastically raise the risk of vehicle accidents for the residents living in the Palisades, Rosedale, Pacific Views, Villa Trinidad, Sea Cliff Way, and surrounding side streets that must use Rancho del Oro to exit their communities. The interchange will threaten the safety and welfare of children and parents crossing Rancho del Oro to access McCalliv Elementary School due to the increased traffic risks and vehicle emissions. It will violate the state's, San Diego County's, and Oceanside's climate change action plans for reducing the number of vehicle trips to achieve reduced pollution and climate-changing emissions. Therefore, the undersigned registered Oceanside voters petition the Oceanside Mayor and City Council to vote to remove the Rancho del Oro Highway 78 interchange from the city's general plan. Again, in a short period, this petition has already collected close to 700 signatures, which shows urgency of this matter. There's a huge growing momentum in the community to remove this from the general plan. The proposal for the interchange was already previously removed for the aforementioned reasons, and it should never have been reintroduced to the plan for the special interests that put it back in place. Oceanside cannot afford to compromise the safety... to compromise the safety and the environmental hazards or the construction costs of such a monstrous project. Thank you for your time, and I welcome any questions that you might have regarding this petition.
Thank you. Our next public comment is from Ken Layton, to be followed by Dirk Akima, to be followed by Bob Ashton. Mr. Layton, whenever you're ready.
Good. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Very good. Ken Layton, speaking only for myself. Those of us with Oceanside roots may recall what happened in the year 2000 when Don McKinney ran for city council. He reported that he had raised $30,000 out of the gate, which at that time was a lot of money for a no-name to launch a run for city council. Only problem was that the local papers reported that the $30,000 figure smelled like a scam and did not come from legitimate donations. It looked like McKinney apparently wanted the huge figure to be known so that other candidates would not run. It was reported that other candidates were, in fact, dissuaded from running. Although he ultimately failed to get elected, the scam worked in part. Fast forward 20 years, and it looks like we just got too old with another candidate statement scam. Victor Roy reported that he personally lent his campaign for city treasurer $4,000. Really, Victor? You had $4,000 of your own money to lend? Hmm. Or was that claim just to scare off others from running? Because when it became clear that you owed the city $798 for your candidate statement, you refused to pay it, up until the very last minute before it went to collections. You said you were discriminated against and that the county registrar was operating illegally. Yet you never provided any proof of discrimination or illegal activity. A month and a half ago, you reported that your election account still had $3,442. Only problem, when you finally paid the outstanding $798 debt about two weeks ago, you didn't use that account. You used a credit card. Gee, Mr. Roy, does that political reelection account, which you said had $3,442 in it six weeks ago, even exist? It's funny, because you are listed as the treasurer of your own campaign fund, and you don't have to disclose anything about that fund to anybody. You avoided my questions last time I asked you about it. If that fund, which you said had over $3,400 six weeks ago, does not exist, this would all seem to be fraudulent. Why would you have not used it to pay off your old campaign debt? That's what that fund is for, Mr. Roy. I implore the city manager to have the city's finance department or city clerk or whoever to look into this and to ask to see if the city treasurer is gaslighting an account that does not really exist. If you choose not to answer, Mr. Roy, then at least it can be reported out that you chose not to be transparent, even though transparency is why you said you ran for treasurer in the first place.
Can you wrap up your comments? Thank you.
Our next public comment is from Dirk Akima, to be followed by Bob Ashton, to be followed by Nick Ritchie.
Thank you, Zeb. Good evening, City Council Members. Dirk Akima, 30-year resident, Director of Save Oceanside Sand. Been a pleasure working with city staff the last two years to help assist with the development of the Oceanside Sand replenishment and retention study. I want to thank the council. I want to commend the council for their recent decision last meeting to direct staff to prepare a grant request to State Boating and Waterways Division for continuing engineering funding of the sand study. A 4-1 vote shows strong support by the city council. I certainly appreciate that, that it's a priority for the council to restore our suffering beaches. It's very fortunate that Congressman Levin chose to appear today to announce the receipt of $33 million for the City of Oceanside with this relief stimulus funds. And I would ask that the city council consider using some of those funds to divert to the sand study as a priority measure so that we can get this sand study on a fast-track basis so that it could possibly qualify for this upcoming infrastructure bill that the Congress will be considering. In fact, Congressman Levin, you know, referred to that in his speaks, in his comments, that there is a potential of earmarking to be considered with the infrastructure bill. And since Oceanside has been promised federal funds since the 1980s for the restoration of the beaches due to the boat basin construction, I just think this is a great opportunity that the city council should seize upon and to take the initiative to direct necessary funds to accelerate the engineering side of the sand study. Thanks so much. Appreciate it. Bye.
Thank you. Our next public comment is from Bob Ashton, to be followed by Nick Ritchie, to be followed by Sherri Mackin. Mr. Ashton, whenever you're ready.
No, thank you. Good evening, Mayor Sanchez and Oceanside City Council Members. I wanted to take some time this evening to address the City of Oceanside feasibility study for sand replenishment and retention device project. Over five generations of my family have enjoyed our city's beaches and coastline for the past 60-plus years. I feel that it is critical that the city leadership and staff stay committed and engaged in protecting and restoring our city's most valuable resource, the very lifeblood of our great beachfront city, our city's beaches. It is also critical that Oceanside City stay the course in developing sound solutions for both sand replenishment and, most importantly, sand retention. I applaud the Oceanside City leadership's unanimous vote last year to fund the current engineering evaluation and feasibility study for sand replenishment and the retention device project. While other cities allow their fate to be directed, driven, and decided by outside agencies, Oceanside is clearly leaning forward on sound science and engineering-based solutions for sand replenishment and retention. I would especially like to thank Kyle Kroger, Jonathan Borrego, Russ Cunningham, for their continuing efforts to stay informed, engaged, and involved with this effort. Also, thanks to Brian Leslie of GHD and the city's engineer Kyle Kroger for their presentation at the Shoreline Preservation Working Group earlier this month. Lastly, thanks to the city staff for seeking California grant money to support this effort. Always use other people's money if you can. In this challenging coastal world facing the complex issues of global warming and sea level rise, we, as a coastal city, must adapt and provide our citizens with sound solutions to these issues. Recently, I witnessed a lot of "no or not-on-my-watch" comments at both the Shoreline Preservation Working Group and the last Oceanside City Council meeting regarding the sand study and potential retention solutions. Regarding these naysayers, I would ask them, what is their solution? The proposed solutions must not negatively impact our coastal environment, the safe beach access for all, our fantastic surf breaks, or low-local sea life. I would think that no reasonable coastal citizen will argue with a solution that restores our once-great beaches for the safe enjoyment of all sea citizens and visitors while meeting these requirements. I look forward to the results and proposed recommendations of the sand study, and I am in full support of this and other efforts to restore our beaches. I encourage our fellow Oceanside citizens to join in support of this effort. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Our next public comment is from Nick Ritchie, to be followed by Sherri Mackin, to be followed by Carolyn Kramer. Mr. Ritchie, whenever you're ready.
My name is Nick Ritchie. I am a board member of Save Oceanside Sand. I want to thank you, council members and mayor, for your wise and bold decision months ago to fund the feasibility study to replenish and retain sand. You recognized that the federal government would not be fulfilling their responsibility. You saw the urgent nature of our shrinking beaches and the growing waterfront, and you acted. While the study continues, our city has received $33 million from the federal government from the American Rescue Plan. Next week, the council and mayor will be attending a workshop about how to spend this money. I urge you to invest some of this money in sand retention and replenishment. What is left of our 3.7 miles of former beach hangs in the balance. Losing our beaches was a focal point of the 1997 Citizens Committee to the council and the 2001 Sandag Report. If you haven't read these, please do. They are similar to what we read about our beaches now. The city council in 1997 and 2001 did nothing with the recommendations. I believe this council will be wise and bold, acting to invest in our now and our future for the citizens of Oceanside. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Our next public comment is from Sherri Mackin, to be followed by Carolyn Kramer.
Good evening. Sorry, I'm keeping my bandwidth. Hopefully, I won't be freezing tonight. My name's Sherri Mackin, Oceanside resident. And I'm excited to say, here comes the dredge. Glad to see we're getting our annual dredge. But while they're pumping out the harbor mouth, please, council, use some of your persuasion to work with Carlsbad to obtain extra sand from the lagoons that they've been dredging. Far different than placing 12 groynes, a groin field, on our beaches, Carlsbad will have nothing to lose, only benefit, as any sand placed on our beaches will head south and nourish their beaches after ours. Check out how much sand they are getting from Adonia Lagoon. Waves are actually breaking in the lagoon. I've never seen it this full of sand. Sand replenishment is a regional task, and each coastal city has a responsibility to reserve our coastlines for the future. Sand replenishment should be a shared effort. Tonight, we heard from Honorable Congressman Mike Levin that the city will receive some $33 million from the feds. Well, I ask, please take some of that $33 million, rent a barge or two, load them with sand from lagoons, and drop it on our beaches at Oceanside Boulevard and Buck Beach for a change. We owe that to our other sand-starred beaches rather than merely replenishing the beach at the pier that will be used for hotel guests. I am on record, I do oppose hard structures along our coastline. I find nothing more offensive than thinking of a 12-groin field stretching from our pier to the Buena Vista Lagoon and all the damage it will do, just like the boat basin did to our coastline, to the neighbors to the south. There are other solutions. I look forward to finding the results of the sand study, and we'll go from there. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Our final public comment is from Carolyn Kramer. Carolyn, you need to unmute yourself?
Can you hear me now?
Yes, we can.
Okay, thank you. Yes, just wanted to reiterate what Sherri Mackin said. Here comes the dredge. So an update from the harbor manager today. The dredge will arrive on April 5. Well, the equipment will arrive, and they will start setting up and getting preparation ready for the dredge on April 5. There is no timeline when the dredge will end except that it will end before the Memorial Day weekend. And that's taking into consideration any equipment malfunction or any weather that might hamper the dredge. So I would also like to comment on those government funds. And, you know, sea level rise is a reality, and it's coming whether we like it or not. So I'm not sure whether what those government funds that we just got a bucket load full can be used for, but maybe taking into consideration sea level rise, maybe the infrastructure, our sewer infrastructure that's located in the sand should be relocated in preparation for sea level rise, because it's coming whether we like it or not. And I don't think, from some of the previous comments And I don't think, from some of the previous comments made, or the naysayers, I think we all agree on one thing. We all want sand. We just disagree on the retention part, because we all know what happens when you drop a rock or a boulder in the ocean. So, every time you drop a rock or a boulder in the ocean, it changes the way the sand flows, and it changes the way the ocean flows. So, just imagine dropping 600 feet of 12 groynes in our ocean from the pier south. Well, as a longtime surfer of Oceanside, I can only imagine what that would do to our surf breaks. So, I know some think it will make it better, but even in the sand study and the retention study, it says there is no guarantee about what will happen to our surf. So, take that into consideration when you're thinking about this, because surfing is a great component of what happens in Oceanside. So, thank you for your comments, and bring on the sand. Thank you.
That concludes the public comment.
Thank you. And I was wondering to staff, Ms. Larson, do we know at this point whether the extra $600,000 that was approved by council will be able to be used this year for the extra dredging and sand along our beaches?
Mayor and council members, the $600,000 will be available as the dredge is progressing, and at that point, they will determine if there is available sand to be utilized, as well as given their dredging timing, if it all works out. We've made it known to them that the funding is there, and so that's something that's not known at this time, but will be considered through the process.
You'll let us know.
Absolutely.
Thank you. Okay, next is our mayor and our council member items. Item 26 is my request, as mayor, to make appointments to our motions for removal from some or all of the city's advisory groups. List is included in the packet. I move approval. I understand that there are two requests to speak on this item. Can we hear from them?
Correct. There are two public comments on this agenda item. Our first public comment is from Linda Lewis Wright, to be followed by Wendy Bravo Dolan. And we're getting Ms. Wright on the line? All right, whenever you're ready.
Okay, hello, mayor and council members. It's Linda Lewis Wright, last name being Louis Wright. My statement is, Oceanside's mobile home communities, with their unique ownership and space rental agreements, have placed many homeowners in captive situations with the owners and managers. These unique situations require those who advocate, provide resources, and referrals to be constantly informed and familiar with updates to the mobile home residency law, the city ordinances, each park's rental agreements, leases, rules, and regulations, as well as resources that include local attorneys, who are well-versed and practiced in the laws appropriate to the often urgent issues encountered by park residents. The Oceanside Housing Commission must, at all times, include a person who stays informed, attends city and attorney-in-park meetings, and is knowledgeable and able to address the needs and concerns of all mobile home park residents throughout our city. And I thank you very much for listening.
Thank you. Our next public comment is from Wendy Bravo Dolan. Oh, you need to turn your microphone on? We cannot hear you. We're hearing something. Oh, we still can't hear you.
Well, anybody knows sign language?
It appears that your computer doesn't have a microphone. Oh, there it is. Okay. So, our...
Now I need an interpreter.
Apparently, you need to turn down the volume of the meeting, because we are getting feedback from your computer. Okay, we just sent you a request to unmute yourself? Can you call in to the Zoom meeting?
Yeah. All right, but I do want to state that I do appreciate Ms. Wright applying and bringing up the issue about the mobile home parks. In fact, one of the appointments that I'd like to make is, that I'm requesting, is Shelley Parker to alternate one. Ms. Parker does live in a mobile home park, has been very, very active. In fact, I believe we got over 30 emails in support. Councilmember Weiss?
I will say, the emails we received, in both support and opposition to Ms. Parker, surprises me for all of the commissions. I will second the mayor's motion, but I would like to register, just because I don't know what's fact, what's not, but I would like to register a no vote for Shelley Parker for the Housing Commission, but I'll second the motion on the balance.
Councilmember Rodriguez?
I will also not be supporting Ms. Shelley Parker. I've been made aware of some information that I think it's important for the public to be aware of, because some of the public call in on decisions that we make here on the dais, and they have concerns about campaign contributions that we receive that potentially influence our decision. I'm of the belief that a campaign contribution is a First Amendment right, as protected by the Constitution and as affirmed by the United States Supreme Court. But I am in receipt of several donations from Golden State Manufactured Homeowners, the Rancho San Luis Rey chapter, of which Ms. Shelley Parker is a board member. I have copies of minutes of Ms. Parker making motions to donate to Mayor Sanchez's campaign amounts as high as $1,000, other amounts of $250 throughout the years. And so, I know Mayor Sanchez has also brought forth the special interest donations of campaigns, which I have no objection to, but she obviously has brought it up, and it's been a concern of hers. And so, I would like her to, potentially, if she would like, to answer and address why she's appointing someone that had the authority to donate thousands of dollars under a board, a special interest. And now you want to put her on an important commission here in the city. But again, I would second Councilmember Weiss's motion, and I will not be supporting Ms. Shelley Parker.
Actually, it was my motion, and it's been seconded with respect to his one request. And I actually have known Shelley Parker for several years. She is a very, very hard worker. If we do not support Shelley Parker, we will not have a member of a mobile home park community. I read all the emails, and I think that there was maybe one that said something. Also, there were some that were negative about, for example, Ms. Wright. And as to the comments about a contribution from Gizmal, I believe I've had contributions from Gizmal two, maybe three times. The most was $1,000. It is a campaign contribution. It is a part of a First Amendment right, and it was in support of me, because I have been very supportive of the mobile home park community. This was not a personal funds from Ms. Parker. And, I mean, there are contributions from the building industry and from, even from folks that have spent over $5,000, $10,000, who have active projects before the city council. And that is something that does not violate the law, apparently. So, at this time, I am asking for support for all of them. We do, I do believe that we need a representative from the mobile home park community. Thank you. Is there...
I second the motion.
Yeah, I second, but yeah, but my motion is for everybody.
And I'm okay with that. I just want the board to register a no vote.
And I did register the no vote on Councilmembers Rodriguez and Weiss on the appointment of Shelley Parker to the Housing Commission.
Well, I am urging support for all of them. Thank you. Please vote.
Motion approved, 5-0, with Weiss and Rodriguez voting no on the appointment of Shelley Parker to alternate one on the Housing Commission.
Thank you. And we're now to item number 27, excuse me, item number 27, which is request by Councilmembers Rodriguez and Jensen to adopt an anti-tax resolution and provide direction to staff. And Councilmember Rodriguez?
Yes, thank you so much. I appreciate this opportunity. I am the representative of the city on SandAg. I'm a voting member, and I'm becoming more and more familiar with the regional plan and the spending budgets of SandAg. And it is appalling to me, the gross lack of usage of our existing tax revenues, both from the feds, the state, and Transnet, which primarily funds SandAg's operations. And there is a proposal coming forth. The final numbers will be out this fall that are grossly above any revenues that we will currently receive. And so, I want to send a clear message, and I'm hoping the majority on this council will support a resolution. The resolution reads as follows. Whereas San Diegans already pay some of the highest tax rates in the country, including the highest sales tax, the highest gas tax, the highest state income tax, and some of the highest property taxes, and whereas even though the sales tax is considered one of the most regressive taxes that disproportionately impacts low-income families the most, the San Diego Association of Governments, SandAg, is considering sales tax hikes to fund their dream list of the five big moves. Whereas Oceanside's economy has been negatively impacted by COVID-19, economic lockdowns, our small businesses and working families continue to struggle with making ends meet as it is, and whereas state and local government should always look internally to improve efficiencies before ever considering any tax increase. Now, therefore, be it resolved by the council of the City of Oceanside as follows. One, to communicate our commitment to taxpayers in our city, that our council will refrain from voting to increase taxes this year, and will instead rely on cost-efficiency reforms to balance our budgets. Two, to instruct the city manager and any other city representatives to communicate our opposition to any tax increases that may impact our residents that are being considered by the city, by the city, county, by the city or county of San Diego, the San Diego Association of Governments, the North County Transit Board, or any other government entity. Three, to communicate our opposition to the governor and the state legislator to any tax, state tax increases that may impact our residents. So, I'd like to make a motion to adopt this resolution, and in the adoption of this resolution, the complete text of this resolution to be on our minutes as the public record document. And I would also like a letter to be drafted by city staff and mailed to both SandAg, the North County Transit District, and all governing, voting members of SandAg. There are 17 other member agencies. And that's my motion. Thank you.
I understand there is one person, one public comment?
That is correct. Our only public comment on this item is from Linda Slater. We're getting her on the line. And Linda, whenever you're ready.
Thank you. Good evening, Honorable Mayor Sanchez and council members. I'm addressing this to councilmembers Rodriguez and Jensen. First, it was closing Brook Street Pool on February 24th. Your claim was that money was not available. You were wrong. Second, it was, "Oceanside is doing nothing for the homeless" on March 10th. You were wrong. Now, you claim California has the highest taxes, and you want governments to refrain from approving increases in taxes. Again, you are wrong. According to Kiplinger, California is in the, one of the 10 most tax-friendly states in the country. And even the right-leaning Tax Foundation rates the tax burden for Californians at eight, number eight in the country. The point is, Councilmember Rodriguez, you are using inaccurate, misleading, and inflammatory language to make spurious claims. Please stop. Work with your colleagues and contribute to the solutions. That's what your constituents and the people of Oceanside want. Thank you.
That concludes the public comment on this item.
Back to the dais, Councilmember Jensen?
I'm going to second that motion.
Okay. Any other comments? Oh, Councilmember Weiss?
Yes, I just want to, so, we're not actually adopting a resolution. The resolution will appear in the minutes. We're actually authorizing staff to send a letter, which is generally the process that we would do. But I will say that, having seen and have been part of presentations on the five big, five bold moves, I have concerns, because the estimate at one point was $177 billion. And I did speak in front of the Board of Supervisors at one point, because my concern was that SandAg has failed the voters of San Diego County in that the voters approved the Transnet extension, which included some very specific roadway projects that would have benefited North County, including 78, I-5, and I-15. And SandAg is no longer pursuing those projects. And I think when you violate the voters' trust, their ability to look at what amounts to a significant increase, and I don't know how they would do it, since the SandAg, the Transnet numbers, it's a half-cent sales tax, doesn't generate near what the $177 billion would generate, I'm concerned that with that violation of trust, they don't deserve to get a second chance, or at this point, a third chance. So, if, to put this in a letter format, to send to NCTD and SandAg and those member agencies, I will be supportive of that.
Okay, so that's a motion, a second, and then Deputy Mayor Eichheim.
Again, I have very similar thoughts to Councilmember Weiss. In 2019, early 2020, I sent a letter to Mr. Hassan Abrada from SandAg, expressing those same concerns. And SandAg went to the public, asked for this tax for these certain projects that were going to benefit North County in our roads, and then miscalculated how much tax we were going to raise, and then decided to change what they promised they were going to spend it on. It's something that we, I take seriously here. We have Measure X. We have a Measure X Oversight Committee. Measure X Sales Tax, it's supposed to be spent for infrastructure and public safety. I would not be comfortable going back to the voters for tax, especially if we didn't follow through on our commitments from the first one. So, I think it's an important message to send, that you can't mismanage projects or taxes, and then just say, oops, and let's raise taxes again. So, that's an important message I think we need to send.
All right. Okay, my comments. I was actually surprised to see this on the agenda. Bottom line is, the council has never really taken a position regarding, you know, whether to support a tax or not support a tax. The only sales tax that, that we actually took a position on, we actually didn't take a position on, but it was Measure X, which is a public safety measure that included, it was a general sales tax, but there was a promise to the community that we would be spending it on public safety, on, to address homelessness and critical infrastructure. And the bottom line is that we actually, as a council, did not take a position. We actually, what we voted on was to put it on the ballot. That's all we've ever done as a council. I am concerned that, you know, I have no idea what this is talking about, because there is no proposed tax either this year. And I actually did support the Measure X, as did our public safety associations. Firefighters and police officers did support it, actually put in money into this. I understand, Councilmember Rodriguez, you did not support it, and you actually campaigned against it. But I am not going to be supporting this, because truly, I think this is a statement. First of all, it has no legal effect. And I truly think it's just campaigning, and it's already started. So, let's vote.
Real quickly, would this resolution be assigned a number in lieu of the meeting minutes?
No, it's a letter. Isn't it a letter? Directing staff to...
I think the intent in discussing this with Councilmember Rodriguez was to basically have the minutes reflect that the items in this resolution were endorsed by the council, but not to assign it as a separate resolution, the way we would do other resolutions.
I would just ask that the full language, yeah, the full language of the...
Language of the resolution within the minutes.
Correct. Please, thank you.
And it's a letter by staff to SandAg and NCTD.
And NCTD, I think.
And the member agencies, signed by whoever votes in support of it.
The member agencies. Are you talking about the representatives on SandAg?
Correct.
Okay. Please vote.
Motion approved, 4-1. Sanchez, no.
Thank you. So, we are now on general council member comments. Any comments by council members? No? We have, we have several things that have been happening here. First of all, on homelessness, actually, can we have a report on homelessness, Ms. Larson? An update, if you will. I was asked some questions about the rollout of the motel vouchers to address moving out the encampments, especially on Oceanside Boulevard, and timing and stuff.
Mayor, mayor, council members, so staff is actively working on developing a hotel voucher program in order to get homeless individuals off the street. That will be up and running as soon as possible. We do need to get some contracts in place. That does take a little bit of time. We will launch it as soon as possible, and we will have an item on the April 7th council agenda for additional authorizations relative to that program. We also have drafted an anti-camping ordinance, which we'll be bringing to council on April 7th. We have, we're working our revisions to our parking ordinance to make some comprehensive revisions, but also address oversized vehicle parking. That's scheduled for the April 21st council meeting. And we've also drafted an open flame ordinance that will be brought to council on May 5th. will be brought to council on May 5th. Also, just with regard to the south Oceanside Boulevard campsite, the homeless outreach team is visiting the site regularly to engage with the occupants. The Oceanside Police Department is actively providing enforcement and visible patrols to reduce crime and protect safety in that area. The chief reported that today we had seven arrests and citations, mostly for narcotics, but also some illegal weapons violations in that area. We did host an outreach event on March 15th, with that engaged with 23 individuals in that area. Two clients went into emergency shelter as a result, and one went into permanent housing. It turns out that their voucher had come up on the Section 8 waiting list and was waiting for them, so we were able to make that connection. And then one was referred for substance abuse treatment. Our objective is to offer all occupants the opportunity for temporary housing with services to help them to become self-sustaining and permanently housed, and also remove the camping area pursuant to any applicable legal requirements. I do want to note that campsite was not established nor condoned by city staff. However, our response must follow all legal requirements, and we are committing to getting this addressed expeditiously.
Thank you. So we're hoping to move the encampment within maybe three weeks?
Well, as soon as we possibly can, once we have the appropriate measures in place to be able to legally address it.
Okay, thank you. Also, on COVID, did you, did you have a report on that?
So, mayor, yes, I do have some updates to share with council. Oceanside's had 12,272 confirmed COVID cases as of March 22nd, over 580 hospitalizations, and sadly, about 150 residents have passed away. Our case rate remains below the county average, with about one case per 14 residents, while the county average is 1 in 12. There is free COVID testing at City Hall on Tuesdays, Thursdays, and Saturdays from 9:00 to 3:00 p.m., with results back quickly. We also have mobile testing available. Tomorrow, it will be at Chavez Resource Center on San Diego Street from 9:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m. Thankfully, cases in Oceanside have continued a downward trend, and San Diego County moved to the red tier on March 16th, which allows for more indoor business activities. That includes indoor dining, movie theaters, and museums at 25% capacity, maximum of 100 people. Retail indoors at 50% maximum capacity, and gyms indoors with 10% maximum capacity. More than 1.4 million vaccine doses have been administered in the region as of yesterday. Almost 19% of San Diego residents aged 16 and older are fully vaccinated as of yesterday. Eligible people are asked to first check with their health care provider, the, for vaccine availability. And the city's website has a link to the various other ways that folks can register for vaccinations. There's a number of ways, but you have to be very persistent in order to get an available appointment. The vaccine, the Oceanside vaccination site that was located in Ocean Ranch has shifted to the north candy, the San Diego County North Coastal Public Health Center at 1701 Mission. The clinic can provide up to 700 vaccines a day, depending on supply. It's open Sunday through Thursday, 9:00 a.m. to 3:30 p.m. You can get a free bus ride on NCTD, on a bus or a train to your appointment by showing your appointment information. The state and county also want to prioritize vaccinations to the most impacted zip codes, which includes the 92058 zip code in Oceanside. Those residents in that zip code can make an appointment at myturncalifornia.gov, or walk up to the site at 1701 Mission Avenue. All others can make an appointment online or by calling 211. And we are working on establishing outreach with the county at the Chavez and Crown Heights Resource Centers to increase vaccine availability. Also, just want to note that the county extended its rent and utility bill assistance program application period to close on March 31st. It helps prevent evictions for low-income renters or those unemployed due to COVID, and you can apply at the county website. We do have links on the city website. Additionally, new funding rounds were announced for the California Small Business Grant Program, which runs March 25th through March 31st. Information is available at ca-reliefgrant.com. And then, regarding the city's local grant program, we dispersed 130 grants in our first round of the Small Business Grant Program, 317 grants in the second round, which was funded by General Fund, for a total of 447 grants benefiting 371 unique Oceanside businesses. All city offices are open to the public pursuant to the current public health protocols. That includes mass distancing, applicable occupancy limits, and online services are available and encouraged. And for more information, visit the city's website, oceansideca.org, or by calling customer care at 760-435-4500.
Thank you very much. And as to the opening of the vaccine site at the Livwell Center here on Mission Avenue, that was an effort that was facilitated by Supervisor Desmond. He helped me. This is something that I had asked him for, is to be able to get people to be able to walk there. This is, there's also assistance being provided by Promotoras to be able to get to the Latino community. The 92058 was identified as one needing to be addressed, because it has, you know, has been impacted worse than, the worst in anywhere in North County. So, 40% of the vaccines are being reserved statewide to address this. And please, please, continue to try. I was actually, Monday was, this past month, not this past Monday, but Monday before, was when we opened it, and it was really, really exciting, because it, you know, there were, even the National Guard was there to assist. On Tuesday, I was able to call through and get an appointment for that site the next day. So, last Wednesday, I got my first dose of two. And so, I'm asking people, there's also vaccines being provided by Scripps at the new facility on Jefferson, also CVS. Keep on calling, and we need to hit that 85%. Also, we have 34, as to businesses, we have 34 businesses unfortunately that have closed, but we have 43 new businesses that have opened, and 29 in the pipeline, opening in the next six to nine months. We did have our first meeting of the Wennebago Lagoon after, I think, three, three years, four years. Really exciting, because this is post the EIR, post the appeal period, and we now have a plan to raise $5 million to get it, to get it shovel-ready, and this is very, very exciting. And we also, I've been appointing to the Air Pollution Control Board. This is probably the first time in Oceanside's history that we have a representative on the board. And so, we elected the chair, who is Supervisor Nora Vargas, and the vice, vice chair, and I've been elected to that seat. So, we, so there is going to be a lot happening with that newly constituted board. And, well, there's a lot of other stuff going on, but I'm going to go ahead and say, let's adjourn to the next meeting. Actually, it's to a workshop, which is March 31st, next Wednesday. What is the topic of the workshop?
Planning Commission Appointments.
Oh, yeah, that's right. It says workshop. Planning Commission Appointments. So, we are adjourned until 2:00 on March 31st. Thank you.